Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Harrison Township Planning Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven oh five. Who would like to act as secretary this evening? Mr. Mulder, can I count on you?
Second.
Thank you. I guess I should have realized with man out.
I kind of thought I was coming. Captain.
Proximity.
Yeah.
You can go on any order you prefer.
Member Baca, excuse. Member Aparca.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the other one.
Yep.
I know I'm looking at this for the need. Make sure I check it out. Member Baca.
Present.
Member Plum, excuse. Member Aparca, excuse. Member Devlin.
Present.
Member Tom Nellin.
Here.
Member Mulder, here. Chairman.
Chairman. Thank you. May I have approval of the agenda as presented, please?
Sumut.
And may I have a second, please?
Support.
Ms. Devlin and Ms. Baca, um, Mr. Baca. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes that we have been provided. Listed are June thirtieth, June twenty-first, and July twenty-eighth, and we received one physical copy and one in email. If you've had an opportunity to review those, please make your changes known. And if you want to, we can address them separately, or we could, if there are no changes on any of them, we can approve all of those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder.
Support.
Mr. Tom Nellin, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Mulder, will you please read our first hearing this evening?
Case number zero-two dash twenty-two dash S. Dave Nona, three-one-seven-three-seven, South River Road. This is...
New pavement to provide additional parking and boat storage. Front and side fencing, new seawall and docks. Is the applicant present? Hi, please come up and give us your name, please. And so just everyone is aware, we're relying on our voices this evening. We don't have any electronic, microphones are not working. So if you could project and be clear, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
My name's Dave Nona. I'm a part of the ownership of Sundog Marina. Good evening, members of the planning commission and everyone else. I know it has taken us a long time to get to this point, but now I believe that we have addressed most of the issues that have been raised, except maybe for one issue relating to the width of the landscape strip. But I hope that the commission will see fit to provide a variance for that strip width from ten feet to six feet. And I'd like to provide the following reasons for that. Number one, we have upgraded the vinyl fence. Originally, we had to propose a plain white vinyl fence. Now we've upgraded that to a molded vinyl brown color that has the appearance of cutstone. Okay? And then we're providing more trees in the strip than required. We're providing a tree every twenty, twenty feet instead of the required every thirty feet. And as you can also see on page, on sheet four of five, if we go to that ten, if we go to that ten-feet width, we essentially are going to lose another eight or nine storage capacity for boats, which, you know, which would hurt us. As you also can see, we're providing some landscape area in the front along the river, about twenty-four hundred square feet, which, you know, if distributed along the strip will provide another, probably another ten feet of width of landscape. So for these reasons, I would hope that the commission will see fit to approve this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Have you received a copy of the planner's letter, the fire chief's letter, and the engineer's letter?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the engineer's letter, I think we can address right off the bat. The minimum pipe size for the storm sewer is twelve inches. The existing six-inch storm sewer line should be increased to a minimum of twelve, but it was discussed that you had felt that the property seemed okay with the six-inch.
Well, that's what we think, but we have our engineer, Bob Land, with Urban Land Consultants, communicating with Mr. Nimmer, and hopefully that issue will be addressed between the engineers and will be resolved.
Right. And Mr., yeah, so Mr. Nimmer indicates that that portion can be discussed during detailed engineering review.
Yes.
If so approved. Okay, great. So we've got that one out of the way. Okay, fire chief. The property is subject to annual inspections. This includes snow removal and any other obstructions. No parking fire lane needs to be posted and placed during the winter storage to prevent parking in the fire lane.
No problem with that.
Okay. The signs need to be portable for removal during non-storage times when the fire lane is the center of the property. If any other entity requires modification to the site plan, a new site plan will be required to be submitted to the fire department for review. The fire department has no other issues with the site plan as presented. So you're okay with, you're adding the no-fire lane sign as needed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Let's go to the planner's letter, please. And it talks about the size of the property, the front entrance, the ornamental iron fence, and the sliding gate, the new grass landscape area, reconfiguration to accommodate a ten-foot-wide concrete platform, and one new boat dock will be constructed. We have the additional sheets three and four, which I think you already had four up there.
If you'd like, I could kind of cover the couple of really...
That would be great.
One issue that maybe requires a little bit of explanation. So I've got the site plan pulled up, and Mr. Nona has provided the sheet three and four, kind of two alternatives to his proposed winter storage of boats. And he has presented those two alternatives as a justification for why he is requesting only a six-foot-wide grass greenbelt with fence and trees, as opposed to a ten-foot-wide greenbelt with trees and a fence as well. So the biggest issue, and we saw this back, I think, earlier this year, as you can see here, this area has been designed to be able to be used as a fire lane during the winter when boats are going to be stored in this portion of the site. Our ordinance does not allow for boats to be stored within twenty feet of the property line. So that dimension is, it's not, it's indicated, I think elsewhere in the plan set, but it's about, you know, right along here. So they can't store any boats within, in that area. The fire marshal required a twenty-six-foot-wide minimum fire lane. And so you've got that twenty-six-foot-wide measurement right there. But our ordinance also requires a greenbelt along the western property line because this property is used for residential purposes. So kind of working and going back in different iterations of the site, the applicant has kind of given it more thought and is asking the planning commission to consider allowing this six-foot-wide buffer so that he can do his preferred alternative to boat storage, which is this one, sheet three. This allows Mr. Nona to store forty-two boats and still comply with the fire lane and provide the six-foot-wide greenbelt. He's showing the sheet four as a, as the other alternative, not the one that he's asking for, because this one only allows for thirty-three boats to be stored if the ten-foot-wide greenbelt is required. And so that's my, the biggest comment and the one that would require your kind of discretion and decision tonight, is again with this buffer here. So as he said, he is proposing a fence that mimics kind of more of a concrete, stamped concrete type feel, although it is a vinyl fence, but it is a screening fence, six feet tall.
Yes.
He's proposing the evergreen trees spaced every twenty feet, as opposed to thirty feet. So our ordinance provides three options whenever a major screen is required. In this case, it's Marina adjacent to residential, and major screen is required. One option is a six-foot-tall decorative masonry wall with a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer, planted with deciduous trees for each thirty feet of length. Another option is, as an alternative, a six-foot-tall fence with a fifteen-foot-wide landscape greenbelt planted with deciduous trees for each thirty feet of length. Obviously, he can't get fifteen feet wide. And then the third option is even wider, a twenty-four-foot-wide greenbelt with a berm with trees. So that provision is outlined in section six-point-oh-three-A of the zoning ordinance. However, in the section prior, section six-point-oh-two-C, it says that the planning commission, when evaluating the specific requirements for screening described in section six-point-oh-three, those three options, the planning commission has the authority to modify these requirements when justified by the nature or intensity of the proposed development or the characteristics of the site. So three options are given, but you even have additional flexibility to prove, to approve an alternative if you see fit based on those reasons. So, again, the applicant is proposing just a six-foot-wide greenbelt with evergreen trees, five-foot-tall at planting, every twenty feet in length, along with that vinyl fence with a cutstone look. And so that's the decision that you would have. My second comment is with regard to the sidewalk. As you know, a sidewalk is always required for new development. We've talked about this previously in, in other sites in this area. The sidewalks on the south side of the road in this location, not on the north side. There are no other sidewalks on the north side. So that would be a second determination that you would need to make. If you can find a resolution and are comfortable with it, I would support it, but you do need to make these kind of two decisions.
Got it.
So if you have any questions, I'd be trying, glad to try and answer them.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Excuse me. Commissioners, any questions to the planner at this point?
So if we, if we make that decision, it would not have to go to ZBA?
Correct.
Is that correct? Because it can be made here at our...
At the planning commission, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, discussion? Questions for the applicant or the planner?
Well, I think we talked about that sidewalk last time Mr. Nona was in front of us, and I think we had consensus that we were okay because the bike path, path was across the street, similar to what we did for the made-in-the-shade business. We made a similar decision, so I'd be okay with that.
I agree with that.
I agree with that as well. It's practical, it's a practical decision. Okay, let's talk about the landscape barrier. I understand the reasoning for it. I think it's very important, it's more important to have the fire lane accessibility to meet that requirement, and that would limit, that would change the width from ten feet to six feet. But he is providing evergreen trees, a minimum of five feet tall, I think it says?
Yeah.
Five feet tall? And then spaced every twenty feet, and then that's in addition to a decorative fence that has a vinyl fence for maintenance, but has a nice stone look to it.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's four feet tall.
That's...
No, no.
No, six feet tall.
Yeah, that was a mistake on the...
Correct.
On the plan. It's six feet.
Okay.
I know there was a section that said four feet, but that was just a picture. There is a note about that.
Six foot.
So the notes were on the...
The diagram right there shows four feet.
Yeah. That was a mistake.
Yeah. This note shows six feet, the diagram shows four feet. Good catch.
Yes.
But you intended to be six feet.
Absolutely, yes.
While we're, while we're looking at it, there is a discrepancy between the letter that the applicant submitted on August thirtieth and the site plan. The letter, it says there'll be a fence on the residential property line, and the landscape buffer will be to the west of the fence. And there it's shown to the east. So I just wanted to clear that up. It will be the fence, then the buffer...
Oh, great. Then the bu, yeah, correct.
And then the parking lot.
Correct?
Yeah. So the, so the fence is facing the resident, the residential property. The landscape material is facing Marina property.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, just want to make sure everything's aligned. And then the other question I had was with the boat storage. So in the, in the letter, and it's also shown on the two storage plans, that there's a plan to store additional boats off the parking lot and on the landscape area. Is that still your intention?
If need be, and, yeah, if that area, we intend to make that area stable enough if we have some small boats, but that's, that's an option, that's...
And that's where I have an concern, because that goes against all the changes we've just made to storage, making sure everything's on a hard space. So I, I don't think that's, my opinion is that there shouldn't be any boat storage on the landscaping area.
Yes.
Just the, the, one, two, three, the four boats that are noticed on the...
Yes.
Water side? And that, so that would take it, how many boats can, can it store? Forty-two, you said? So that takes it down to thirty-eight?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. Now, yeah, earlier on, we had talked about the concept of grass pavers that stabilize the ground and still give you a green area. You know, if we decide to do that area with grass pavers, would we be able to store boats in there?
That would, that would be in compliance with our, that's one of the recommendations that we provide as a solution, is it not?
Pavers, not grass pavers.
No, it's a, it's a...
Permeable.
Yeah, a permeable, a permeable surface.
But that's not landscaping, though.
No.
But you could have landscaping on, you could have a grass cover on that, so it looks like grass. I mean, it is grass, but it's fairly hard that you can, you can drive on it and you can store on it.
So are you talking, like, stone pavers with grass surrounding, stone pavers?
They're not the stone pavers, they're a...
It's a real touch.
Yeah, yeah. We had them proposed earlier on, and I know there were some discussions. Eventually, the fire marshal had accepted the concept to be able to drive even trucks, you know, fire trucks on them. Initially, before this concept came up, we were going to have the landscape strip as part of the fire lane, okay, by providing these grass papers.
I remember that decision.
Yeah, yeah. But then, you know, there were issues about the curb and what have you, but for the fire marshal, I met with the fire marshal and the fire chief, and they were okay with that concept, you know? In this case, you know, we're not talking about driving any, any heavy equipment in there. These would be very light boats, you know, pontoons mostly. It's like to have that option, if possible.
The permeable surface.
Yes, and we can provide more information, you know, to the engineer on that, if need be.
So possibly conditional on that aspect, if we, if we did not want to give a full approval violating our ordinance?
Well, I'm less concerned with those at the north than I am with losing the six-foot screening, or the six-foot area, ten-foot wide, the ten-foot landscape buffer area. I think that is more impactful to the neighbors, keeping that ten feet rather than letting it go to six, whereas having boats stored on the, that north area is going to be less impactful to the neighbors.
And so let me just, let me just not play devil's advocate, but let me just put this out there. So if you have a fence on the property line, and it's a six-foot decorative fence, and it's on the property line, anything between the resident and the fence would be the resident's responsibility. Anything from the fence into the Marina area would be the Marina's responsibility. So if there was a six-foot-tall fence on the property line, and then evergreen trees every twenty feet on the other side, on the Marina side of the fence, I guess I'm going to ask, what, what's the significant difference, I mean, obviously four feet, between six and ten? Would you want to see more trees, more landscaping? Or is it, is it just like a noise thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's the only thing that comes to my mind, is the noise, because obviously it's not visual.
Right. Just keeping that intensity of just far away from as you can. And the ordinance says ten-foot wide.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so could a solution be more, more, yeah, more landscaping?
Yeah.
Could that, could that be a compromise?
Noise barrier?
Instead of every twenty feet, we might do something every eight or ten feet to make up for the difference? I guess I'll just see if we can, you know, get to a solution.
So, well, I think that sheet number four is the solution.
You have four, yeah, is that sheet number four again?
That is sheet number three, with that extra row and the six-foot-wide landscape buffer. So, I mean, the applicant has put evergreens, which are, you know, thin, they're not going to grow a lot.
They don't offer much.
To twenty...
And they're five-foot, so they're not as tall as the...
Yeah, so, I mean, they'll never grow together after fifty years, excuse me.
So if we had, Mr. Mulder, what, what type of evergreen are you planting? Are, are you planning on planting?
These are the...
The Leonard's are Arbivites.
Arbivites, yeah.
So those have a tendency to grow six to eight inches a year.
Yeah.
Sometimes a foot a year if they're fertilized and well maintained.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they also have, they also need maintenance in order to not, you know, die off. So, so do you think that, so that five-foot could technically be six-foot after the first year, or close to it, and then, and so on? Do you think that adding additional landscaping, like, like, not additional of the same, but different, maybe some, I don't know, some fast-growing, you know, four to six-foot dense bushes? Something that would, would act as a noise barrier?
Do you think dense shrubs would act as a noise barrier?
Um, yes, if there's a...
And have to be really dense.
Yes, if there's enough. Yes, exactly, if there's enough.
Or a wall of Arbivites would be the same thing.
Yeah. Arbivites are very thick when they grow in.
Yeah, when they grow in, yeah.
They, they'll grow, and they'll...
Takes a while.
They'll hit four feet.
Well, unless they're planted close together to start. I, I have a row in my yard, and it serves well as a noise barrier to the pool with kids next door, and it works wonderfully, but they are, you know, planted right next to each other.
Excuse me, can I make a comment?
Yes.
You know, this situation of the storage, during the wintertime, there is no, there would not be any activity in there, okay? And during the summertime, there are no boats in there, there are only parking. So the activity would be only like one month in October to put the boats in, and maybe, you know, a couple of weeks in the springtime to pull the boats out. So in terms of impact, noise and what have you, there really wouldn't be that much.
Minimal.
Minimal.
Thank you.
For, for the planner, do you have any experience with this buck tech molded vinyl fence?
This particular design, no. I do not.
I see there's multiple colors available, but from what I was just looking, whatever color selection we pick struck me as acceptable. Perhaps the PC may have an opinion on it or not, but...
It's pleasing.
Yeah, no doubt. But I also wanted to poke back at, at the Arbivites, actually, because I'm reading, I'm reading what our code says here, and I'm just going to restate it, six-foot-tall decorative masonry wall with a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer planted with quote-unquote deciduous trees. An Arbivite is, is not a deciduous tree, it's actually a shrub, when you get down to it. So some of, or you were poking a little bit too, I just personally found that, that the spacing of a five-foot Arbivite at twenty feet struck me as awkward. I don't think it's able to achieve what they're looking to do. Personally, I believe that, that the words in the ordinance are actually pretty useful, that a deciduous tree actually provides a much nicer separation between the two spaces than a, than a shrub that's going to, you know, maybe poke a couple feet above the fence at the end of the day, and the resident on the other side doesn't really benefit from it at all, but always going to see the fence where the tree starts to, start to grow out and start to create, I believe, that separation that the code was looking to achieve.
So are you thinking, so, let me take that to the next step, then. So are you thinking to intermix the two or not use the Arbivites at all?
If it were up to me to make a, make a thought, I personally would have here with deciduous trees planted. I'm going to pick a number now for, for conversation, because this says ten-foot wide. So if we're going to relax the ten to six, then I would have argued, then let's, let's expand the thirty to twenty-five, you know, pick the number, something that now provides a little more density of tree because of the reduction of spacing on the greenbelt. So, you know, we can kind of debate, is it twenty-five feet, twenty, I mean, that, this PC could talk about. But to me, I think the deciduous tree is a better separating landscape element than an Arbivite's bush, in my opinion.
And, and I think it is more pleasing to the eye than the Arbivite, but it does offer additional maintenance requirements in, in keeping the branches. Now you have to worry about branches going over the fence and that maintenance issue. I don't think, I don't think neighbors would mostly mind to have a deciduous tree versus an Arbivite. It does give you a little more interest throughout the year.
Yeah, and that's what I'd be concerned about, Mr. Baca, is the canopy of the trees. Because if you plant them three foot from, so we have six-foot, you plant them in the center of that bed, so that means... So that means, you know, it, it's gonna be encroaching on, on the house as they grow. If you look at, there's only.
That's only nearly eight feet.
It's only a seven-foot setback, so, I mean, you're gonna, and plus it's gonna be encroaching on the yard, the entire length of the neighbor's yard as well.
Unless you stick with a, a low-volume tree.
There are smaller species that.
Canopies, I mean, you have to, true, small canopies. But it has to be, it has to grow.
Right tree, right place.
It has to, it has to grow higher than six feet in order not to hit the fence.
Right, right, right.
Yep, but there are species that are, you know, that, that grow in that habit.
So, so let me go back to the idea of, and, and I'm only gonna bring this up because this is something that we discussed in two other previous locations within the last eighteen, twenty-ish years. One was Maple Village where we required a barrier in between the residential neighborhood and we found a mix of arborvitae and deciduous trees planted at alternating. And then the other one was the condominium complex next to Adiba. And, and that backs up to, I can't think of the street there, but that subdivision. And we required them to, we, we found a common agreement to plant trees fencing, trees fencing, but it gave a nice look. And I believe that those were full evergreen trees as opposed to arborvitae. But, but there's a couple of different options. And I guess the point that I'm trying to make is, is that we, we, we worked out an agreement with multiple options to, to make up, you know, to make up for the, for the lack of requirement to the ordinance. So are we, are we, are we talking about making a, a suggestion to accommodate the six feet? Are we talking about going more toward accommodating the six feet, but making it deciduous trees? Thirty feet apart, twenty feet apart? Are we, are we considering arborvitae at all? Do we want them closer together and taller? What kind of suggestions do we have?
So my personal feeling is I'm, I'm comfortable with the six-foot buffer with a higher density of trees in the area to create more of a buffer zone. The arborvitae are kind of common in that area as a screening in properties surrounding it. So I would be comfortable with the arborvitae just with a higher density is my personal feeling.
So when it comes to, your point's well taken, Larry, about the canopy. As, as I look at it too, I guess an alternative option to that is that canopy issue is only applicable for maybe four trees. Because a lot of this property is not by structures or anything, right? I'm looking at a house that, I don't know if I see the length of the dimension that becomes adjacent to the fence and then a garage. But nonetheless, the point is still well taken, so I'm, I won't debate that. I, I guess the other thing we would need to know, if, if this board feels that the arborvitae is a legitimate solution, I mean, there are, you tell me, how many different species of arborvitae exist? Some of them only grow five feet tall, right? So the actual species become pretty significant here. Cause if you don't specify the right arborvitae, five feet is gonna be as tall as they're even get. And it's only gonna have a spread of five feet and it's gonna look really kind of silly. You know, other ones will get up to twenty feet over a period of time. You'd wanna make sure if, if we're gonna go down that road that, and I wouldn't even know what the species is, mind you. So I'm not speaking like I know it, but I know there's a lot of species that exist. So you'd have, we'd really have to think about that if you're gonna go down that road that somehow, we somehow define, maybe without, without botanical name associated with, but expectation for what the species should be able to perform on the day it's planted as well as within a period of time. That you would expect that within a certain period of time, it should have reached a breadth of something and a height of something.
If I may direct to your, just some guidance from the zoning ordinance. So one of the three options for the wall, the one that called for evergreen trees, called them spaced or planted between six and eight feet in height at planting, spaced not less than ten feet on center, because trying to, you know, have them fill in over time.
Yeah.
The ordinance talks about, it has listing of evergreen trees. There's, there's evergreens, what the ordinance calls just evergreens, and there's narrow evergreen trees. The arborvitae is one of the narrow types of two, arborvitae and red cedar. The evergreens, these would presumably be the larger ones, pine, spruce, fir and hemlock. So if you're looking at evergreens, you could consider, say, have them choose one of the ordinance allowable evergreen trees per the ordinance. They can choose one of the four types. And maybe you could stick to the six to eight feet at planting, not less than ten feet on center to kind of be consistent with what the ordinance would call, call for. So you could, or you could go narrow evergreen trees, six to eight feet, not less than ten feet, or not, yeah, not less than ten feet. Not, not more than ten feet.
Cause with, with evergreen trees, you also, with the large ones, in order to get the height, you still have the spread. And, and they, the large ones do have a tendency to spread more than six feet. So then you're looking at.
Cause you could simply then say, evergreen trees per the ordinance, planted six to eight feet, not.
To exceed.
Yeah.
Right.
Not less than ten feet.
Yeah.
Or not more than ten feet.
Not more than, yeah.
I'm just, so, so Emerald Arborvitae, they grow fourteen to sixteen feet, four to, four to five foot width.
If you let them, if you plant them by themselves, but if you plant them as a hetero?
Right, so, no, I, well, I just given some statistics, the red cedar, twenty to forty foot in height and then ten to twenty, twelve to twenty foot wide. So I, so, yeah, so just wanted to give you that information.
And as, I thought the arborvitae would work well in this location because if they do grow wider to fill in the space between, that also means they're encroaching on the fence and the parking lot because you only have a six-foot gap.
Right.
So something that grows in fairly thick, but doesn't exceed that six-foot width. Like you said, the arborvitae is four to five foot maximum.
And that's over a long. That's over a long period of time.
Yeah, that's mature, that's matured.
Yeah, maturity, yeah, yeah.
And then we also, I think, you know, if we're planting closer, we'd probably do a much better job itself because they're gonna protrude past the fence.
And it's a nice look.
And they won't encroach over the property line. You know, how many times have you seen people cutting a neighbor's tree that's encroaching on the property line and it looks terrible?
Right.
Cause they don't want the canopy encroaching on their property. So they're like to cut it straight up. They hate to have to see that after trees are put here where the canopy is cut at the property line so it don't encroach.
Well, and we do know that the arborvitae are popular along the marinas. Lots of the marinas have used them, we've approved them. It is, it is a common look. But five feet is insufficient in my, in my thought. So I would think, I would, i- if we were to recommend arborvitae, I would recommend starting at six foot. Because at least that first growing season, you've got six to eight inches. You're already over the fence and then the next year and so on, if maintained, if maintained and fertilized and, you know, watered and if taken care of.
Yeah, it takes, you know, three or so years to really start to grow.
Get established, yeah.
Six foot height or six foot on center or both?
No, six foot height and closer together.
Well, you'd probably want ten foot on center if they grew up to five feet.
Not more than ten feet.
Right, I agree.
I think mine are four feet apart and it took about seven, six, seven years for them to grow in.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be an instant.
It's not, it's not a long, I mean, it's not, yeah, it's not terribly long.
First year sleep, second year creep.
Yeah.
For arborvitae.
Sixth year. Yeah. So, all right, so, so I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm thinking that that might be an option. Why don't we try and button this down? If, if we, if, if we're thinking in terms of offering a, a reprieve to the ordinance in that direction, what are your thoughts? I like the idea of the fence. I am in agreement with the sidewalk.
The masonry wall?
Yes, the, well, the, the fence in place of the masonry wall.
The masonry look.
Yes, there you go. Yes, the decorative masonry stone look fence that is vinyl. I like the idea of tighter landscaping to offer a more protective view to the resident and to beautify the space, obviously, on the other side. But to provide also a, a stricter noise reduction more immediately.
Excuse me, can I?
Excuse me, excuse me?
Can I, can I ask a question about the fence? I guess it's just for clarification. We're prepared to do a fence, a decorative stone look fence throughout. But I know that township requires a decorative fence in the front, a metal decorative fence, which we're providing. My question to, to you and the planner is, would you want that decorative fence to extend to part of the side fence that is visible from the street?
So you're talking the roadside?
Yeah, maybe thirty, forty feet, I, I don't know. I mean, that's something for you, we're willing to do that. And the other related question is, as we get close to the river, do you want us to take the fence all the way or do you need to? I mean, right now, there is a, a chain link fence, I imagine for visibility and what have you. We're prepared to take it all the way, but I mean, would you prefer that we leave some?
I don't think our ordinance allows for a six-foot fence all the way to.
Yeah, that's my question, so.
That's where.
We need to add thirty feet off the, from the water.
And what kind of fence do you need? Is, is, there is already a chain link fence, just keep that in, add this?
Right.
Okay, okay.
As it meets the water.
Yeah.
Is it thirty foot from the front as well, Mr. Batia?
I don't.
I know it's three foot.
I don't believe so, as long as it's outside of a clear vision area.
Right now, there's about probably close to fifty.
For non-residential, it could, it could stay.
Okay.
Not taller.
So who would happen at the end of the approach, it would start at the end of the approach?
Correct, the fence, the vinyl would start at this point and extend back. This is proposed to be six-foot tall ornamental iron type fence.
That's correct, yeah, but my question is, do you want to have part of that side want to also be ornamental metal?
Iron?
Yeah, because there's no building in there, this is just all landscape.
It makes sense not to run the, the vinyl fence all the way pretty much out to the right of way of the road.
Yeah.
You'd want to have the matching metal decorative fence at least.
To run the corner.
Back to, yeah, at least around the corner.
Thirty feet or?
Till.
Yeah.
Well, the parking lot starts.
Deciduous trees. Yeah, yeah.
Dogwood, crabapple, those are shorter.
I'd be okay with that.
So what's that distance rounding that corner, that first, that first section where, that, that's no parking? What's that, what's that distance there?
That's about thirty, thirty-five feet.
That would be, that would kind of almost mirror.
Yeah, yeah.
That on the other side then too, yeah, that space right there. And that would provide for a deciduous planting? I like that idea. Thank you, Mr. Norwood.
Okay.
So that would then be the lower, would that then need to be the lo, what's the, what's the height of the fence in front? Six foot?
Six feet, that's all.
Okay, so it would be six feet as well?
So it could be six feet back as well, as long as it's fifty percent transparent, crackable.
How many feet? How many feet along that fence do you want it to be the metal fence?
They said thirty.
Thirty, thirty-five.
Thirty from the front and thirty from the back.
Okay, okay, okay.
I, I just think pleasing to the eye, if it started and stopped, you wouldn't want it to start and stop in the middle of a parking space.
I, I agree with.
You would want your full parking space to be covered by the decorative vinyl stone molded fence.
I, I agree, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, that would have to be determined. I don't have that dimension here and I don't know if it's listed on.
It's about forty, it shows where.
If that's thirty, then that would be, yeah, you're, you're about right, I think. Twelve, so thirty, thirty-two feet maybe.
The first parking structure which has.
Yeah. That's the base from, and there's thirty.
These are on twenty foot fence?
Uh, I think they are, it's a twenty. Does it say, yeah, twenty foot, yeah, yeah, yeah. So even if we backed that up to forty, that still gives a nice two foot so that that first parking place is completely provided coverage.
Yep.
Which would be more pleasing to the resident. Okay, well, all right, so where are we taking this? Yeah, and on the deciduous trees, Mr. Batia, I'm reading the section, the interior parking lot landscaping or parking lot greenbelt requirement. And it talks about minimum of two and one-half inch caliber. And that's kind of a small, it takes a while to actually turn into something large enough to be impactful, I think. Although would be lovely three seasons of the year, yeah. So, so, so if we were to require deciduous in that forty-foot section up front and perhaps even i- in the back section as well as an option? I mean, if we were looking to increase the mix, so to speak. I like the idea of the arborvitae closer together, taller, six-foot minimum and closer than ten feet.
Not more than ten feet on center.
Not more, yeah, and that makes sense, not more than ten.
Not more than ten feet on center.
I would also propose that the arborvitae stop in the back at the landscaping area. That way it covers the parking spot, but doesn't obstruct you from.
Okay. From this backyard to the water.
Maintain thirty foot or more as well.
So that's where we were talking about the decorative wrought iron fence to continue at that point so that.
And, and maybe there's some lower long-type evergreens that could put in that area.
To beautify it.
You know, every six, six or eight feet just to.
Give it some interest.
Continue sort of the, the spirit of the landscaping all the way through the line.
Yeah. I like that idea. Okay, so, so we're talking about requiring the, allowing the six-foot vinyl fence, cut stone look in the section directly adjacent to the parking spot areas which covers about forty feet in and about thirty feet back from the water's edge. And then wire.
Metal fencing.
Metal fencing, thank you, to make up the difference.
Ornamental iron fence.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's.
Is it ornamental?
I would, most of those are aluminum now, and that's why I think it just says metal fencing.
Oh, this is the note he has, tall ornamental iron fence to mention.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the detail, I just said metal fencing, I didn't see the note.
So are you planning an iron, a true iron fence or an aluminum fence? Just asking. Just asking.
For the, for the front, it's aluminum, decorative aluminum, yeah.
Matching your existing, correct?
Matching the, what we have now existing. By the way, a correction on the, if you go to the river, the area, the landscape area close to the river extends thirty feet, plus we have another ten feet of like platform area, so technically, it's forty feet if we want to keep that area open, from the parking lot to the river, it's about forty feet.
So that, that, so that, that area beyond the fence before the dock is, is landscape as well?
Yeah, we, yes, we have like thirty feet of landscape and another ten feet of concrete, basically.
Oh, concrete?
Yeah, along.
The walkway out here, and that's what I thought, instead of defining the distance, because we don't have measurements, we just say that the.
Yes, but we're about the space between the fence and the walkway, that's green.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, out, out here.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, instead of defining the distance, because we don't have an actual measurement, we say that it just blocks the parking space.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I like that idea. Okay, how do we want to write this?
Excuse me, for that part of the fence, what kind of fence would you want? I mean, right now, there is a chain link fence, is that okay if it stays there? Four foot from the.
I like that ability, I like, personally, I like things that match, so.
Shorter decorative.
Yeah, I think it would be more pleasing to, to match the front.
Shorter decorative.
I think that should be four foot and it should be the same style, that would be my preference.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think four feet's the requirement on the water's edge.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So, four foot matching metal fencing to match your front.
Yeah, okay.
And around the corner, around the corner, and across the match. Okay. Okay, how do we want to, how do we want to write that?
Do have one last question for Adam. With, regarding the landscaping area and parking boats, not parking boats, if you decide to go with what the FDM was talking about with some type of previous paper, would that require an update to the site plan?
We'd want, we'd want that indicated on a revised site plan.
Okay.
And probably the fence as well.
Yeah, yeah, the fence, the revised site plan should reflect those.
Landscaping.
The landscaping additions and the fence adjustments that we made.
Well, can we talk about that briefly, those, that parking boats in the landscaped area then, by the, if we're allowing the, allowance on the landscape buffer, I guess I would not be in favor of allowing storage on the required landscaped area.
So, I have a question that's sort of tied to that. By allowing, by allowing boat storage in that area, isn't that violating our thirty-foot free space from the water's edge in? Isn't actually violating that? So really, they wouldn't be allowed there? Because that's obstructing that view one hundred percent over the winter months.
I think you could, I don't know if there weren't specifically addresses that mentions boats, but it does talk about obstructive view, right?
Abstractions, right, so to me, that, that would obstruct, and sort of getting back to what you were, you're thinking about, so I think, you know, that, that may be a good, so making the other amendments, we would eliminate that, because we want, wouldn't want to have the obstruction violating the ordinance in the winter months.
Excuse me, by the way, they will not extend all the way, so this would be only on the eastern part of the water.
Right, but, but they'd still have to be thirty foot from the water's edge, so the way, the way it's, it's depicted, they would be within thirty feet.
Yeah.
So we could just make sure that together then?
And we don't want storage in the landscaped area, even if it's just grass, you know, adding the orange, but it's fair to drive it over it.
Is against.
Is going to destroy it.
Yes.
Would need to be repaired every year, you know.
I agree.
So the authority to modify the requirements is justified by adding additional plant material as screening on the landscape buffer, so I'm comfortable with that if we're, if we're going to prohibit the landscaped area that's required at the north of the site to remain the landscaped area.
Free of storage.
Yeah.
Right, I, I have to agree with you on that.
I suspect it's kind of a dangerous way to go down there, allowing to probably, these, the screening.
Six foot line to the landscape.
I know we think for a pump alley, it's usually, so.
And I, I can say, in, in all our time sitting here, we've made, we've made a lot of those accommodations shortened with, and I think, I'm not going to say unfortunately, but the nature of the township, because we are such a mismatch of, you know, communities, Marina next to residential happens a lot.
Right, but I mean, an extra row of boat storage, I mean, who's that hardship for?
Right, exactly, yeah. So we try to find the happy medium that, that meets both. Okay, what do we want to do? What were you saying, no less than ten feet? Arborvitae's no less than.
Not more than ten.
Not more than ten feet. Oh, yeah, right, I was going to say not.
Plant date intervals, not more than ten feet on center.
I'd like it closer. I mean, a six footer is going to start out like this to begin with, so say two feet across or two feet. Well, we know we're going to be, if, if we're going to be making these suggestions to the applicant, I think we're in agreement, we're going to want to see an updated site plan, so, so let's get some hard figures to provide, so he knows which direction to go in, if that's the direction we're going in.
Excuse me, can I?
Yes, Mr. Nolan.
Because we're getting towards the end of the season, and then there's some engineering to be done, and I'd like to, if possible, start doing some grading and what have you, and maybe install the fence. I, I would agree to all the issues that you came up with, you can stipulate them, and I can make the changes on the plan, and submit it to, you know, administrate, can it be done administratively, my question is, without having to come in front of the panic to wish again?
Well, I think, I think if we make these recommendations, a formal site plan is going to have to be drawn up in order for that to be approved.
We'll draw, we'll have the engineer draw the plan according to your suggestions and recommendations at this meeting. My point is, if possible, I'd like to, you know, avoid having to come back and hear, because, you know, we're trying to see if we can get something done in here before.
I'm not saying we don't trust you, I'm.
Can I ask, is that something the tech team can review? To ensure that our conditions have been.
I think we've been very detailed in what we're asking for, there's a lot of wiggle room to make changes to it, and that's where I'd be comfortable making a conditional approval on the site plan, as long as it meets all the conditions, because we've been very, very descriptive on what we're looking for. Yeah?
Madam Chair, I wonder if I could please help you formulate a motion?
Yes.
I think it needs to, your motion would be to first waive the sidewalk requirement, and then you could approve the site plan contingent upon a revised site plan being submitted to and verified by Township Administration, which shows no boat stored on the grass area. You're allowing the six-foot wide green belt, but require arborvitae's planted six to eight feet in height, not more than ten feet on center. That along the western property line, you would require a six-foot tall decorative metal fencing in the first thirty feet from the front. From, from the front property line.
I was getting away from the distance and just saying that it blocks the parking spaces, because we don't have an actual, an actual specimen on the distance.
You would require six-foot tall decorative fencing up to the front of the parking lot, four foot tall, from the back of the parking lot to the shoreline. The remainder to be six-foot tall vinyl cut stone look. Finally, revisions to comply with engineering comments.
To be the final.
Yeah, and all of that is gone, is taken to, that revised site plan needs to be supplied to the Township Administration for review and to verify that it meets those stipulations.
Thank you.
So I think that, that's a good motion, I think if, if we add, I think we talked about adding one to deciduous trees to the front, and the six-foot buffer next to the wrought iron aluminum fence.
Metal, yeah.
And those were going to be the.
Ornament, ornamental.
Ornamental, and so they'd be in the dwarf, I guess, maybe the dwarf or smaller size, and then we also talked about, I mentioned, in the, from the parking lot to the water's edge, with a four-foot wrought iron aluminum fence would be, we'd want to have shorter shrubs, maybe spaced eight foot apart in that area.
I'd be in favor of deciduous in that area as well.
I'd be okay with that.
I, 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 there's no reason why we couldn't do a mix of both, and, and I only say that to provide a green view, so you're really not blocking the water, but you're giving some, you know, you're not just looking over at a, you know.
Wouldn't you want those trees to be short? I mean, you don't want them to grow and then obstruct the view.
No, that's what we're saying, yeah, we're saying an ornamental size, which is naturally shorter. Okay.
So do we need to repeat that?
Yeah, that's it, Mr. Nolan, did you want to make a motion?
Well, here we are, I'll make the motion as long as it includes the two amendments that I just discussed, and if I could truly use the motion and add the amendments, I'd make that motion. And to approve, actually.
To, to, to conditionally approve.
Yes.
Approved based on the following conditions.
Ah, okay, all right. Okay, so do you want to word that from beginning to end, or do you want?
No, we, we have it on record with my amendments, so we can go forward.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion as stated by Mr. Tominalo, do we have a second?
Support.
Mr. Batja, thank you. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Mulder.
Do you need a roll call?
Um. No, 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 we don't need a roll call, all right, we can, okay?
Majority.
Yeah, yeah, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Nolan, you heard the, you heard the conditions?
Yes, I will comply, I will make the plan, and I'll, I'll, the initiative has been waiting, waiting for an hour, hour, you start. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, give us a moment to clear the deck here. Excuse me, we're going to go ahead and continue with the meeting, please. Our next case, please, Mr. Mulder?
Case number nineteen dash twenty-two dash CR Boat Town Marina and Reynolds, three zero three zero one, south of the road.
This is a compliance review of a temporary seasonal approval for a floating office for boat rentals and a portage on on the property. Is the applicant available?
Yes.
Oh, great. Hi.
Hi.
And you are?
Joseph Sabajio.
Madam Chair, if I may, actually, since the last time we met with the petitioner, we listed several items to be resolved, I must say that they, they've complied with everything we identified, and want to thank you for that. So I, I would go ahead and make, I would approve the compliance review with the stipulation that we have another compliance review of October twenty twenty-three, actually, I think we want to make that August twenty twenty-three, and I'd make that motion.
The only question I have with the motion is, I believe, last time, you scheduled the one for this year and next year at the same time?
So, so when you say this year, do you mean yet this year?
Today's compliance review, we, we had, we had him come in for another one, and I thought we scheduled this one and the one for next year at that time, earlier this year.
In our, in our motion.
Then we do it in August, then?
Yes, but that's where I thought we required they have one this year and next year, I just thought we scheduled the date, that's, I just don't want to be in conflict with, if we already had a time.
So, so adjust your motion to accommodate.
Do you want a date in August?
You know what, a timeframe, either what we had previously scheduled or what you're suggesting now.
Yeah, my suggestion is to have it by the end of August, so you want to say the third week of August twenty twenty-three?
Before the wet season's over?
Yes.
So a motion to approve, so you're.
Twenty twenty-two compliance review?
There you go, twenty twenty-two compliance review.
And to schedule another compliance review, the third week of August, year twenty-three? And to schedule another compliance review the third week of August, 2023?
We have a motion by Mr. Tominalo. Do I have a second, please?
Support.
Mr. Batsha, thank you. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you very much. Okay. Third item review.
Public hearing, case number 23-22-RZ, Holzbecky Investments LLC, with multiple addresses, 36727 Jefferson, 270418 Screws, 271551 Screws.
The applicants are requesting to rezone the properties from one R1A and R1D to RM2. There are five pieces of property. Is the applicant available?
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Graham. I'm an architect. I'm here representing Chris Holzbeck. He's the owner of the development. He's also the owner of Christopher Homes. We are requesting a change of zoning from single-family to multifamily conditional. I'd like to point out that our request for conditional rezoning means that we are locked in to the design that we are going to be presenting. There's no, there's no bait-and-switch kind of scenario that can ever happen legally. We are presenting a condominium development, and that's what we're locked into if we get this conditional zoning. But I'd like to explain what the, what our development is. Our development is going to be in two phases. The first one's very minor. The first phase is where we're going to take the, if you know the site, we're going to take the, the small existing preschool and we're just going to convert it into two, it's going to be actually, now we've got, we've converted it into two ranch condos. Each one are going to be about around 1,900 square feet each. They're going to have a garage. Actually, the house was, the building was actually designed to be split when they first, when they first built that building. It was designed to be converted into two, two side-by-side condos. And so we're going to finish that, that part of it. The next phase, then, will be the bigger phase, which we're talking about 14 three-bedroom homes and 16 two-bedroom homes. There will be a combination of townhouses and ranches. And all these homes will have garages. They'll be, they'll be on average about 1,200 square feet. Our price point will be around $300,000. We're going with a lot of ranches because we feel that's what, that's what they'll look, that's what is, is in demand in this area. I would like to show you what they look like. Is there any way we can put up the colored renderings? Okay, if not, what I can do is, my assistant here has some colored renderings and she'll hand them out. But basically, this is the, can I show this? This is the two-story, this is the, I'm sorry, the, this is the existing preschool. We're going to dress it up and make it, make it into two condos. Can anybody see this? I'll hand these out later. And then the, the buildings right here, unfortunately, elevation view does not give it, does not give it the justice that it deserves. Here's the colored renderings, and we will hand these out as well. They're going to be, it's going to be a combination of brick and siding and asphalt roofs and metal roofs. And this is, this is one of the, this is one of the bigger buildings. Some are smaller. So I, I, so I'd like to, I'd like, first of all, I want to tell you that we really believe that this new use is consistent with the new master plan. We've been studying both, studying the master plan. I also think that Mr. Young will concur because that this, Mr. Young is, for those who don't know, is your planner, represents the city, oh, sorry, the township, works for Wade Trieb. We also plan on, I also want to make sure that everybody wears that this is not a unique situation. Right next door to us, on the west side of our property, is an apartment building. So we have, we actually have multifamily right next to us. So I, so that's basically my presentation. And I would, 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 would really like to hope that you consider the fact that we're asking for rezoning and it's, and that the rezoning will be conditional.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Okay, commissioners, this is a public hearing for this item. We do have before us a set of plans showing the potential changes to all five parcels. A rendering, which is the same as what I think you just handed out. We also have our planner's letter indicating the descriptions of all five parcels and then a description in detail of the existing conditions and proposed zoning. Our master plan representation, and then a full explanation of our items for review, our seven items for review. Do the commissioners have questions to start out?
Well, I just would like to clarify, in the plans that we have, it shows three units in the existing building, so.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we did, we did do a change of that to two, to two units. We just felt that we were trying to squeeze too much into the three, into threes. So we made them larger units.
Okay. And then conditional rezoning?
Yeah, I had a question with that because I didn't, I saw this, yeah, as a rezoning, not a conditional rezoning.
Yeah, as a conditional at all?
So we, we did not get any written conditions presented as, as along with this rezoning request. Obviously, maybe that's a miscommunication, or we just weren't aware that you were actually presenting a conditional rezoning request. The process is the same, a rezoning versus a, a traditional rezoning versus a conditional rezoning. A conditional rezoning is somewhat different in that the applicant may voluntarily offer conditions in exchange for a rezoning. So if you were to approve the rezoning, you would approve certain conditions related to the use and development of the land. So we would want, if, if the applicant is interested, and it sounds like he is, in offering conditions with this rezoning, you could consider those conditions, but you would want to be very, you would want to clearly understand what exactly are they offering? Because conditions could, could be either limited to, you know, just certain uses, certain uses in a concept plan. They did submit a kind of a concept plan for the site. Are they conditioning it upon that concept plan? So that's something that you would want to make sure that the applicant is very clear about. And ideally, we really do need that in writing. So, you know, our typical protocol for public hearings is to hold a public hearing one evening and then make a decision the following. So we would want to have those conditions submitted in writing and very explicit, so that you would have that to make.
I would like to, I would like to just clarify something. The reason why we went conditional was on the, the recommendation of the planning department. They're the ones that suggested that we switch to conditional. And we, and since we were going to, we plan on building what we say we're going to build, we had no, we had no issues with going conditional.
So if I may, I could provide like an overview of this request and kind of the process for, for rezoning here. So I think this graphic is helpful to, to show it. So what we have here is a proposal for a rezoning request, conditional rezoning request. So we'll hear more about what conditions they're offering. But in either case, the proposal is for this subject site, which is a little less than four and a half acres in size. It's the former Lance Cruz Administration, School Administration Building, located on, you know, Jefferson Avenue between Lance Cruz and Pontchartrain. So it's five separate parcels right now that are all owned by the applicant or with a purchase agreement. And all five of those parcels are proposed to be rezoned to the RM2, RM1 district. They're currently are zoned a combination of R1A district. That's parcels three, four, and five indicated on this plan. And then two of them, parcels one and two, are zoned R1D. The R1A and the R1D are both single-family residential districts. That's likely reflective of the fact that, of the prior use, the Lance Cruz Administration Building. Institutional uses like schools are allowed in the residential zoning districts, the single-family residential is issued. So that's pretty typical in Harrison Township, that a school would be zoned, single-family residential. Obviously, the school is no longer there. The process for considering a rezoning is the Planning Commission holds a public hearing. You're going to open up the public hearing this evening. It's an opportunity for citizens to share their thoughts about this project. Ultimately, you would, once closed, once the public hearing is closed, you, the Planning Commission, would make a recommendation. Your recommendation, whether it's for or against, approval or denial of the rezoning, would go to the Township Board. The Township Board at a regular meeting would have the final decision to either approve or deny. They could accept your recommendation and go along with it, or they could do something different. That, that is their authority ultimately. If a, if the applicant is, is going to do a conditional rezoning, the Township Board would have the written statement of conditions in a formalized legal document that Rosemary would review before the Township Board would adopt it. So if they were to rezone it conditionally, those statements of conditions would run with the land. So this property owner and any future property owner would be restricted and limited to any of those conditions. If they were to change the condition or want to change the commission, condition three years down the road or 15 years down the road, they would only do so by going through the same process again, Planning Commission Township Board. The conditional rezoning gives you maybe a little bit more assurance as opposed to a traditional rezoning. If you were to rezone this to the RM, the multiple-family district tonight, even though they're saying that we are going to do attached condos, they could, once rezoned, do something completely different, as long as it's allowed within that new zoning. So it could be an apartment complex or whatever else is allowed. It could be a senior facility, assisted living facility. There are other allowable uses in the multifamily district. But the conditional rezoning, if one of their conditions, for example, is to limit it to only attached residential condos, two stories, then, then you have more of an assurance that what they're saying they want to do is actually what they would be required to do. So that's the advantage. They could also offer things like an enhanced buffer along the perimeter of the property, or whatever they might want to offer that you could consider. So that's, that's important to know. In my, in my review letter, I did share comments about the, the master plan, land use characteristics of, of the site as well. And I believe you referenced the, the recent waterfront redevelopment plan. So in the 2010 master plan, this particular site, really the entirety of the Jefferson and Crocker Business District was identified as a specialty planning area, so in the 2010 master plan. And that kind of means we need more in-depth study to occur. That did occur in 2015 with the waterfront redevelopment plan. So in the waterfront redevelopment plan, kind of noted in my review letter, some of the, what that seeks to achieve. So the, it says that the waterfront district is to be a mixed-use, safe, walkable, aesthetically pleasing, integrated waterfront district, nautical theme, harmonious with the natural environment, connected to surrounding neighborhoods. It is a place for activity for persons of all ages and interests, with thriving businesses, varied entertainment opportunities, high-quality living environments, and an active lakefront inviting public spaces and varied recreational opportunities. This particular site in the waterfront redevelopment plan is identified for planned development. It's called a planned development opportunity. In that sense, it's basically open for some sort of planned project. Could be a planned unit development, maybe a conditional rezoning, something, you know, where a cons, where you're kind of approving a concept plan. So that does kind of, you know, align with what was envisioned, that they would, that the applicant would come to the township ultimately and propose a planned concept for redevelopment of this property. I, I would, I would agree that the single-family residential zoning for this particular property along Jefferson Avenue does not fit the vision for what the waterfront redevelopment plan would want to see, you know, for mixed use, for residential development, for even, you know, attached condos, what they're looking to do, particularly along, given the presence of proximity to Jefferson Avenue. So I would agree that the single-family residential zoning, in order to implement the recommendations of the plan, would need to be changed to something else. That would be your, you know, decision this evening as to, is this the particular, is this the right plan? Is this the right zoning for it? You do have rezoning review factors that are listed in your zoning ordinance that you and the Township Board should consider when reviewing a rezoning request. You're looking at items such as, is it consistent with the goals, policies, and the future land use plan within the master plan? Is it compatible with, is the compatibility of the site's physical, geological, and other environmental features? Is it compatible with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district? So in that case, if it's a traditional rezoning, you're looking at any and all of the uses that would be allowed in the multifamily district. Are any and all of those uses compatible with this particular site? If it's a conditional rezoning and they're limiting it to a certain number of uses, you could then consider just those uses that they're proposing. You would, I need, the applicant would need to provide evidence that they cannot receive a reasonable return on the investment through developing property with one or more of the uses permitted under the current zoning. So it's like, is the suitability of the residential zoning versus the suitability of what they're proposing? You would consider compatibility of the uses allowed in that district with regard to the surrounding uses. And in terms of land suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of the use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values. You would look at the capacity of the township's utilities and services to, to support any proposed development. The compatibility of the street system to accommodate the expected traffic that would be generated from a development. And the apparent demand for this type of use within the township at this particular location. One of the things I mentioned there is that you would consider the density, is that appropriate? The, the proposed zoning, the RM2 district allows a certain density. It's based on the type of, the number of bedrooms in each unit, whether it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom unit. What they're proposing, at least in the plan that was submitted for your review, is 33 proposed units. 19 of them would be two-bedroom units. 14 would be three-bedroom units. So per the RM2 district density requirements, they would need to have a property of at least 3.61 acres in order to accommodate those 33 units. And they have 4.46. So this is actually lower density. So they could fit more units on there per the RM1 maximum density. Is it practical to do it? You know, that's a different story. But this, what they're showing, at least the 33 units, does comply with the, the density allowed in the RM2 district. I guess the one last thing I would want to say is that if this is conditionally rezoned, they would still need to come back to you for final, full, detailed site plan review. And you could look at some of the, you know, the specific elements, the, you know, Mr. Newmer will look at the engineering, you'll look at screening and fencing, and a lot more information is presented at that time. So that, so just because the conditional rezoning is approved doesn't mean they can start building. They would still need to come back to the Planning Commission. So if you have any questions?
Thank you. That was a very detailed explanation, and I appreciate it. I know the commissioners do as well.
So, so the only question I have, so because it's conditional, I guess, I guess I feel a little void because as, as we go through and look at the plans, I guess I'd like to know what's conditional. You know, I mean, are these, if these are, you know, condos, are they not going to be, you're not going to be able to lease them out, right? Or, you know, are we gonna, you know, I guess I'd really like to know what those conditions are. So I guess I just feel a void right there. Because that could make a difference on this, on the decision. Not that we're going to make a decision tonight, but I guess as, as I, you know, through this. know, through this, and I would really like to know what those are.
That's not a problem. We'll put together a list of what we guarantee.
Right, but I don't have it tonight, I guess.
No, no, I understand. I didn't think we were going to get a vote tonight anyway, so.
Right.
I wasn't anticipating a vote. This was more of a public information, to let the neighbors know what we're applying on doing. That was the whole point.
And incorporating any of the other proposed changes to the, incorporating any of the other proposed changes that you've made, that you discussed tonight?
I'm sorry.
The Building A changes and any of the other changes, I'd like to see the, you know, calculations of density and area coverage.
Sure, yeah, because we're way under, we're way, we're way under what we require, so we, that's not a problem.
Yeah, but I mean, those will have to be updated.
Right.
As in new site plan.
All right.
If that's the only change, Building A.
Yeah, that's the only change.
But after tonight, maybe there might be more changes.
Right.
So anyway, we'll need updated calculations on those.
Yeah, okay, I think it's just one number, okay.
It is one of the, the opportunities with the conditional rezoning is that, you know, the applicant will be listening carefully to comments received during the public hearing tonight, and any comments, if you want to offer any comments tonight on it, could take that back into consideration, and even if he had submitted some initial conditions, typically what we've seen on conditional rezonings is after the public hearing, they would offer some additional conditions, or maybe revise conditions for your further consideration. So that's not, you know, that's not out of the norm. In fact, that has been normal, for the, for the conditions to evolve based on comments and feedback received.
Even all the way up to the Township Board level. Even all the way up to the Township Board level, conditions can always be added.
Okay. That's right, because this is just a recommendation to the Township Board. We're not, we're not actually making the decision, we're making the recommendation.
Right, but we want to make sure.
No, agreed.
Right, okay.
Absolutely, agreed, yeah, yeah. Okay, any other questions for the planner, or council, or the applicant?
Yeah, a question for, a couple of questions for the applicant. So this site, we were talking about the master plan, this site falls within the DDA. Looking at this site and what, what we're hoping to get out of it, according to the master plan, the, at least the stuff on Jefferson, that's where we're, I would like to see something more that fits in line with the V1A zoning for what the future look was for the, for the DDA.
I'd like to answer that. Can I come up and point out the buildings? These, what's unique, these buildings are slightly, these buildings are slightly different from the rest, because not only is the front door facing this driveway, but we have a second front door facing Jefferson, with a sidewalk collecting all the way across. So that, as you drive by down Jefferson, that doesn't look like the back of the house, it looks like the front of the house. And that was done on purpose, to make sure that we fit it in with what the, what the overall design was for Jefferson Avenue.
Yeah, we definitely need to see that.
The other question I had is far as access to the property. Is there any reason why there are no entrances put on Jefferson, and all the traffic is coming out onto the side roads?
That's what we were asked to do.
Okay.
For the planning department.
Okay.
Because of the, the problem was, was the, the number of cars on Jefferson Avenue, we didn't want to interfere with their, with, or provide any congestion to a, to a, to a connector road.
And Jefferson is stated as a major, it's a major.
Yeah, we initially had a driveway on Jefferson, but we were asked to take it out, so we did.
I mean, in my mind, I don't, I guess I don't really understand how that makes a lot of sense, because the cars coming out of the side roads are definitely just going to go on the.
Well, sir, I can explain that.
Yeah.
If you, if, let's say you have a, let's say you have a driveway, a modern driveway today would require, that you'd have to have a passing lane on the side, and there wasn't enough room on the other side of the road, on the other side of Jefferson.
I understand that, but if we're talking about cars turning left in off Jefferson, they're still going to turn left in on the side street. It's still the same number of cars turning, it's just now you're following them onto the side streets instead of directly into the, to the.
Yeah, but people, I think though people turn faster on a street than they would in a driveway, that might have another car coming out of it. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the physics of it, but it's my understanding, I mean, this is, this is very common, that you get any county road, they, they want you to minimize the driveways onto the county roads, and, and that's based upon science that's been established for a long time. I don't know the science, but I, all I know is I, that's what we've been doing for decades, is to try to keep driveways off collector roads.
I appreciate the explanation. Like I said, it's still, to me, it's the same amount of traffic turning off of Jefferson, it's just now you're adding two turns, but I, I understand your explanation. So I, especially if you said, you know, you had looked into adding an entrance here, and I understand why you didn't. So I just wanted to address that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, do we want to motion to open the public hearing, please?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Batson.
For case number 23-22-RZ.
Thank you, Mr. Tommello. Any discussion on the motion?
If you could give the rules of the public hearing.
Beforehand? Yes, I would be happy to, thank you. I should have already asked that you all have your cellphones off, and since we haven't really heard anything, I'm assuming that you all have them, thank you for that. Keep it civil, please. You're all going to be limited to three minutes each. If something has been said or voiced, we've written it down, the applicant has taken notice, we've taken notice, it doesn't have to be mentioned again. We understand that there's probably some passion and some excitement, but we're asking you to please keep your comments civil, and direct your comments to the board, us. We will take note, we'll be writing these down, as will the applicant, he will be paying attention to everything that you say. And then at the end of the comments, we will have the applicant answer, and that will probably also, we will also have additional questions as well. It is, it has been our practice to keep the public hearing open until the next meeting, and, and we have closed it on occasion, but I think it's been our practice to keep it open until the next meeting, until we have more, all of our information. We're still in the information collection stage, that's, and your voices are part of that as well. So with that, I'm going to ask you to please keep it within three minutes. Please don't repeat, keep your words civil, and remember when you're up there, there is no microphone, so please project and speak clearly. And with that, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to open the public hearing for case number 23-22-RZ.
Thank you, Mr. Batson. And a second, please, Mr. Tommello?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mulder. Roll call, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Roll call, Member Batson?
Yes.
Member Blum, excuse, Member Parke, excuse, Member Devlin?
Yes.
Member Tommello?
Yes.
Member Mulder, yes, Chair Murray?
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is open. Who would like to come up and ask a question, please? Come up and let us know who you are, and give us your address, please?
Maureen Mullin, 27890 Riviera Street. Just my, my questions really are not for you, they're for Mr. Graham.
That's fine, you can address those to us, and we'll be, they'll be paying attention as well, yes.
Okay, so how many, what's the total number of dwellings?
I think it was 33, but, yeah, yeah, exactly. We're going to write this down, so.
And is that in stone, or can that be changed? Like, you know what I mean? Can there be, suddenly now there's 60 units, or, or is that, are we committing to 33 and that's it, period?
Okay, we'll address that.
$300,000, is that firm? Or are we saying $300,000 now, and then when they put them up, they're selling them for a hundred and a half? Is your purchase agreement, that he has to answer this, is your purchase agreement conditional on acceptance of the zoning change?
I, I don't answer that.
No, we're, we're writing all this down, and we'll answer at the end.
Okay, and then, can, in the zoning, is subletting, is that allowed, or is that, you know what I mean, or can we make that not allowed, so it doesn't become a free-for-all? You know, with a lot of turnover? Okay, that's all.
That's it.
Thank you. I've got no answers.
Please be careful with the wires as you cross paths.
Or his knees. Good evening, my name is Al Jistrowski. I live at 27140 Ponchatrain. It's directly behind the slum house that they're going to convert into two townhouses. And part of that problem of that plan, that house has not been seen, touched, cleaned, painted, anything, since the school board moved out, which is what, eight years ago? They have two outbuildings, one on each side, that do not have rat walls. And living underneath both of these buildings are vermin, rats, bats, skunks, raccoons, groundhogs, and various other animals. And the land also in the back is on an incline, which comes down into my property, so at least twice a year, the back of my yard, half of the back of my yard, is flooded. And it's because that property is so high. Oh, and I tried to get the problems resolved, but the owner of the property did finally come out, or send a young man out, who cut the grass with a lawnmower, lawn tractor, didn't trim. We have growth along the fences, you know, this high. Behind my house, there were trees that were sprouting, and were four or five feet over my fence. Now, I have a wooden privacy fence, which is in front of their four-foot chain fence. I've asked about them doing something about it, and, because it's growth on their side, comes over, just tumbling over my fence. I mean, so far, they, they've done nothing to, to fix the property, or care about the And turning the two, the raccoon houses into two condos, that, that is absolutely absurd. I see raccoons running across the roof of the house at various times. Now, if they're on the roof, you know they're in the house.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Good.
Please give us your name.
My name is Mark Miller. I live at 26940 Ponchatrain. One of the questions that I have, is this going to be, like a lot of investments, where they become rentals for sale later on? Or is it going to be limited to the same 30% rentals for investors? If they're going to put conditions on it, I would put a condition on it that it can't just be a rentals, because that would just destroy that neighborhood. And I think that's what everybody is worried about, that it's going to just turn into a war. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Catherine Shepherd. I live at 27865 Wisteria. And my question would be, I've seen a lot of these things going on, and I agree, I would like it to be where these people own these places, because I know everybody needs a place to rent, but we know homeowners seem to have tendencies to take care of their properties better. Sometimes, not always, but I agree, I would like it to be owned by people, and not resellable, I mean, leasable or rental property. And another question I have is, where is the green space for 33 homes? Is it down my street?
My street?
Is it down the neighborhood streets? I don't see a playground. I don't see, you know what I mean, we all have yards, and you need to go outside, and that's, I see a lot of problems with all the things going up in our neighborhood, so there's no green space for kids, or even adults. I mean, you all like to go out and sit on the porch, or go sit at a picnic table. I think we need to start incorporating more green spaces for the children and the people that live there in these facilities.
Good point.
And then they have their own area, they can be headed, and they're not all over the neighborhood and everywhere, but at their own homes. And at this point, I can't think of a whole lot more, because I'm kind of nervous. But I just think that we need green space, no matter what we do, that we can't have them running around the neighborhood. They need green spaces, and not no little bitty thing that a little dog goes in. Talking about a green space for families, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van. All right, sorry, Ms. Shepherd. Anyone else?
I'm a little nervous, so.
It's okay, take your time.
I live on Ponchatrain, 27565. I prefer, and I think everybody else in the room here, to look of Harrison Township. We have enough apartments and townhomes, little townhomes are together, but single-family homes would be nicer to look, that look that you're having for Harrison Township, that goes even further down Jefferson.
Could you state your names, please?
Sandra Mansfield.
What's the last name?
Mansfield.
My name is Jacob O'Hara. I live at 27560 Ponchatrain. I recently moved to Harrison Township within the last six months. Recently, right down, less than a half mile down the road from where they're proposing to build this, they recently built two single-family detached houses, which match the existing homes in the area. So I would like to, why are we not trying to match what's already been built recently? There's already, also, having a 26-foot roofline within, it looks like, 30 to 40 feet of Jefferson Avenue, doesn't exactly fit the existing area. All the houses are set back off the road. It's, it, no matter what they try to make it look like, it, it will not even remotely look like what is down Jefferson now. Also, I would like to know, are, are these communities going to have access to the access points that are at the end of both Riviera and Ponchatrain Street?
Oh, this was, I'm sorry, disregard that, that was from the previous, you still have a minute and a half.
And personally, I would like these to only exclusively. And personally, I would like these to only exclusively be for sale. There's rental properties in the area already. Other than that, those are my only concerns with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jason Carmen. I live corner of Wisteria and Jefferson. That's 36900 Jefferson. And I'd say that there is a reason why it was zoned the way that it was. And in that zoning, if you, anyone can look it up, you can have, there's so much land that has to be there for the houses. And that is the feel of this town. That's why people move here, is to have the space and not to be congested. We have a lot of properties already in this township that are condos and apartments and all sorts of things like that. So we don't really need another one. And when we're talking about the downtown district authority, of course, it's like, what we'd wanna see is something to more beautify the area instead of kind of take away from it. So seeing just the affront looking, like mass of structure that are just cramming people into it is not what I would consider beautifying the area. And it's something that I'd wanna see driving down to my home, regardless of where I'm at going in there or even driving down just to go to Metro Park. I would rather see a park there. I'd rather see landscaping and those kinds of things. Or, you know, just keep it the way that it is and have the residential properties that are gonna have, what is it, like 80-foot to 100-foot of width and 8,500 square feet of land to about 10,500 square foot of land? Because that's what it's zoned at right now. And that fits the harmony of what is existing there right now. And we shouldn't change it. So I, for all these reasons that I say what's been addressed, I think traffic's also been addressed as well, I do request that this gets denied and that it stays zoned as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Hi, I'm Karen Antides. I live at 26930 Lance Cruz. Been a resident of Harrison Township since 1981. And my concern is the traffic on our street. There are 40 homes on Lance Cruz right now and there are 12 apartment, I believe there's 12. There's a small apartment complex, single level. You're talking about almost doubling the amount of traffic daily on our street. Our street is not safe as it is. There are no shoulders, there are no sidewalks, there are no streetlights. And having it gone into, from Lance Cruz and not Jefferson, I believe that Lance Cruz is a county road or it used to be, wouldn't that passing lane be in effect for that as well? Which, we have no shoulders. So I don't know how that would work. So that's my concern, is the traffic on our street.
25 miles an hour.
Yeah. Breaks that, nobody sticks with that.
Hi, my name's Connie Miller. I live at 26940 Ponchatrain. My husband and I have lived there for 47 years. And I don't know whether the gentleman who presented up here ever drove from Jefferson on Ponchatrain up to Acacia. If anyone who was interested in buying drove down there, I'm sure they would change their mind and definitely go out onto Lance Cruz. Lance Cruz has been repaved probably four times since we've been there. Ponchatrain has not been. We've tried on two different occasions to get a special assessment district for Ponchatrain. But unfortunately, we always ran into an issue down at the area towards Jefferson because there wasn't anybody, first it was the school, the school administration. We couldn't get enough signatures because of that big stretch of land. We couldn't get enough signatures to meet that 51% threshold. So now I'm looking at the pictures and thinking, okay, I don't know how many of those condos would face Ponchatrain. Are we going to be able to say, oh, all right, now we have X amount of other homes that we can get the builder to assess to help pave the property, pave Ponchatrain? Or maybe as one of the conditions, they can say, we'll pave Ponchatrain for those at least 66 other cars that are gonna go down our road every day.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak tonight?
Jim Headstock, 31698 CN1. That's the other side of the township. But there's a problem here. There's a real problem. We've got these developers coming in and all they wanna do is build multiple-family condos, apartments, housing, senior housing center, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is area zoned residential. It's been zoned residential since I was a kid here, back in 1964. What is going on? Right now, in the township, the multiple sites, according to your master plan, represent 40, 40, wait, what is it? 47 separate master site plans in Harrison Township. 47 of them, ranging from four units up to, I think they said 600 or 400. And guess what that represents? That represents 40% of the total housing stock in Harrison Township. In the county, it's only 26%. We don't need any more multiples, period. I guess the question I have is what planner or planning people told them to change it from to conditional versus it wasn't conditional when they applied for? And why did they decide to go to multiple-family two versus multiple-family one? Well, guess what? If they go to multiple-family two, they can get a higher density. Guess what? They get less setbacks. Guess what? It saves them money and allows them to go something bigger. They did not intend to go with a conditional rezoning. And every, every time you ask them for a conditional rezoning, you better be very careful what you ask them for 'cause I don't think they intended to build what they're saying they're gonna build. Lastly, I'm looking at it and most, most times I can remember off of Jefferson where we told some of the businesses and stuff, you can't exit. Your parking lot can't exit onto a side street. And yet, these people are talking about exiting on Ponchatrain and they're talking about exiting onto Lance Cruz. What is going on? Tell these people, you bought it as a single-family residential. Guess what? Build it as a single-family residential. If you don't like it, sell it to somebody that will. I'm sick and tired of listening to these builders and developers coming here. They wanna make the maximum dollars they possibly can, period. And, you know, if we allow them to do it as residents and as elected officials and government people, shame on us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Richard Pickett, 27190 Hickory. I am in disagreement with the rezoning for many reasons. We can tell by the plans that there is no XL, DCL lanes. Our electrical infrastructure, if anybody lives around that area, is constantly going out. We can't handle, we can't handle that much more on the grid. North Hickory stays on, south or it just constantly going out. So I don't see any plans for that. I don't have any discussion regarding that electrical system. Many reasons, we have sufferers right there going across the top of this. I don't think you're gonna allow them to go up three stories. There are another commission right now saying two stories, three stories. That's gonna be another big hassle. But just on record, I'm against the rezoning.
Thank you.
Go ahead. There's on deck chairs in front of you.
Hello, Gary Benovich, 27101 Ponchatrain. I'm within a stone's throw of the new development. My concern especially is light and sound pollution. That neighborhood is quite quiet at night, not too much light. I'm not sure what kind of parking lot lights you're gonna put in here, but it's, it would be a major inconvenience to have such bright lights out. I'm against this, against this development mainly because, you know, that was school property. All these nice people here paid taxes for many years for that property. And now you're gonna turn it over to developers? High-density stuff like this? No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mike Fogel and I live at 26965 Ponchatrain. My family, we've lived on Ponchatrain for approximately 28 years. And when we came there, we liked the area. We liked how open it was. We liked the lake, we liked the way it was set up. And now to have somebody come in and build 33 to 35 units, and I calculate that's probably, I don't know, 60, 70 cars that would be piled on that piece of, that land. For years and years in the summertime, I've been outside cutting the grass with my neighbors every so often, you know, throughout the week. People would fly from Jefferson down to Acacia and I'm out there hollering at them, you know, tempted to throw stuff at the cars, to tell them to slow it down. Because I had three kids and plus our neighbor's kids. With their streets, there's no, there's no sidewalks on Ponchatrain. So kids are in the street and I'm riding their bikes and it was a problem then and I think now. You put in 35 units, I don't know. You figure there's, I don't know how many kids. I like kids, but where are they gonna play? There's no sidewalks. People will be, they can't exit onto Jefferson according to your plan and so they're gonna exit onto Ponchatrain. And all that traffic is gonna get on Ponchatrain to go on down to Acacia to get on 16-mile road. And there's gonna be a lot of kids in the streets. And I, for one, I'll be out there and I won't holler, I won't holler too often. I'll start throwing things and I'll, I'll get in the road because, you know, it's my kids, it's my grandkids, it's everybody else's kids. So I just think, you know, you get that many people confined in that spot and it's, it's the traffic. The other guy kinda stole my thunder, but it's the traffic, okay? Sidewalks, it's, it's, it's kids' safety. Anyhow, that's it, my piece. Thank you.
Heather Carmen, 36900 Jefferson. We moved into this township when my husband and I first got together. And, sorry, I just had a baby two months ago, so I was like... Or mom. Okay. We have six kids. And we moved into this township before we had any of them. And we rented an apartment and we said, we want to stay in Harrison Township. And so when we bought our house, we like the quiet. We like the calm. I mean, I'm right next to a bar and a restaurant and we almost never have any actual issues. Little bit of partying from some people walking down the street in the middle of the night on Friday nights in the summer. But we don't have like all the super loud chaos and everything that putting 33 places for more people to live, literally at the corner of my property practically, is, is just, it's astronomical on so many levels. And then we just had a millage raise to raise our taxes to help support for the firemen and the police and everything for the township because we don't have enough of them to support who already live here. So how much is this gonna end up costing us taxpayers in our taxes for living here? Because we need to get more police and more fire and more support for things like that. That's all.
Anyone else?
I'm Monica Howell. I'm at 26990 Lance Cruz. Almost, well, kitty-corner from where the development's gonna be. Across from the apartments, the single level they were talking about, which is nothing but problems, people coming and going now. And that's only probably 10 units, I think, in there. And we had a guy come from over there, crash into our house and it was a big lawsuit anyway. Long story, they did it to Luigi's as well. It's just, I don't wanna see multi-families. I don't, we don't need that many people in that small area. And the traffic, I'll reiterate what they've all said. They go flying down our street 50 miles an hour. Do we need 30, 60 more people flying down our street? No, no sidewalks, no lights. And the gentleman with, talking about the rats, I pulled in to turn around in that daycare 'cause forgot something, had to go back. And I watched a big groundhog go under the house. I've also seen a rat run across and get killed in front of my house coming from that building. So I don't think they can redo that. If they're gonna do this, if it gets done, it needs to be leveled. That all needs to go and start over. It needs to have, or rat walls, as he said. We just, I don't think we did. It's nice and quiet in the winter. Do we need more people in that area making noise? And like you said, there's no green space. We were just talking about green space for the first place. The pleasant walls and the, where's that on this, in this design? Pleasant walls and the greenery and the nice look for all the neighbors. That's not even addressed, I'm assuming. So just my say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is your opportunity. Mr. Berger.
Steve William Bardell, 26-year resident. 37865 Point Rosa. The problem that we got with this is you could get 12 nice decent houses on there and then you could residential, put one L-shaped street in through there. And then on that Jefferson side, you put up arborvitae's four feet apart. If you want total coverage, it's not 10 feet, it's not eight foot. Eight foot, you get 50% visibility. Okay, two, four foot wide, you measure center, right? So two feet on each side. So if you're spacing them 10, you got less than 50% visibility. So eight, eight feet is 50%, right? Four feet is 100% arborvitae's, just so you know. Two foot wide, that's from center. So you got two feet on each end, you measured center to center. Okay, so if you put arborvitae's on the Jefferson side, you put a street in there, L-shaped street in there, put in 12 houses, residential. And, and I've been here 26 years. That's what we've been getting. We've been getting these guys coming in here dumping on the residents. This is a residential neighborhood, okay? You could put 12 nice houses in there, backyards and the whole nine yards. So including the street, figure it out. 4.3 quarter acre a house. There you go. You could put 12 houses in there so they can make all the money they want. Put your arborvitae's four foot apart, every green arborvitae's four foot apart. That's 100% coverage when it's full grown. Not 10 foot, not eight foot, four foot, four foot. So again, this is a residential area for the fourth or fifth time. And I don't believe that's a good thing to do. We've got renters. We've got people that own rental properties in the neighborhood. They live in Gross Point and somewhere else. And we've had more problems with landlords renting out houses and not following through. Not just the ordinance officer not filing his paperwork. That's just, that's the tip of the iceberg. But we've had many, many problems with rental properties in this neighborhood. You know, when it comes to houses and the, and these multi-family things, it's a mess. We want home ownership in the township. We want home ownership in the township. Less problems, more people paying into the schools, into the police and fire, and into our township. So like I said, put in 12 nice houses in there. And put your arborvitae on the Jefferson side four foot apart, put an L-shaped street in there. And there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Bergdahl.
Make all the money you want, and everyone's happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, Cindy Griggs. I live at 36776 Jefferson, which is right across the street. I thought I heard something about a metal roof earlier, and I wasn't sure. But my question would be, what is that gonna look like so close to Jefferson aesthetically? The second comment was about the sidewalk, and it's gonna look like the front, when it is adjacent to Jefferson, it's gonna look like the front in the back, and provide a sidewalk. But I'm not sure how good of a sidewalk that is when it's just there. There's no other sidewalks, the comments were. So we're gonna have this sidewalk that's just right there. So that does nothing for the community. And the last comment was about pest control. So if there is any kind of development, I would ask for some kind of big plan on how to contain those so they didn't branch out to any of the neighborhoods because that could be a real big concern. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ann Shepherd, Kitty's husband, and I live at 27865 Musteria. My big question is, is when you cover all this with cement and parking lot, where's all the rainwater gonna go? We already have... Our ditches are overflowing, right, everybody?
Yeah.
Where's the rainwater gonna go? Into the ditches that are already overflowing? You're gonna put that many people in one tiny place? Let's get real, come on. I'm against it. You got no place to put the water, the snow. What are they gonna do? All the snow they plop. They're gonna push it up towards Jefferson. It's gonna run into our ditches. Again, we're not set up for that. I'm against it.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Graham? I trust you have been paying close attention? We have taken notes as well?
Well, the last gentleman talking about rainwater. If you look at the drawing, there's a proposed retention pond in the center of the green space, and that's how we would control the stormwater. And it will be designed by a site engineer.
Hold that up. Go ahead, Mr. Graham.
All right, and then as far as the rental, we would definitely put that in one of our conditions to limit rental. We're looking to make this into a single-family...
Excuse me, please, please.
We're looking to make this into a single... I mean, we're making this into home ownership. The gentleman doesn't wanna be a landlord. The gentleman who's developing this owns Christopher Homes. He builds, you know, he builds homes and townhouses and things like that. He doesn't have condos. He doesn't have apartment buildings. He's a builder. He wants to build and sell the property, and sell, and move on. So as far as the traffic on the side streets, and those are most of the, you know, we can't have any... We don't... If you have a problem with traffic... I used to be a city planner. I mean, not planner, but I used to be a planning commissioner for 30 years in my city. And when we ever have a problem with people saying that there's too much traffic on our street, we would immediately contact the law enforcement and have them set up either... Set up devices that measure the speed on those streets. And then if there is a... And if there is a proven problem with that kind of activity, then we'll have law enforcement enforce the speed limit. And then, guess what happens? Once they do that a few times, that takes... Then people know that that street is a speed trap, and they will stop traveling very... in excess. Basically, and the other conditions that people were talking about, we... I mean, we... There's... If you look at... If we... We could... Next drawing we'll have, we'll show green where there's grass. So that would indicate to show you that there is a lot of green space on this property. We haven't placed... There's room for a... I mean, there's a room for a playground for children. We haven't located it yet. We really haven't got that far into the process. But that also would be the homeowners association responsibility to add additional features like that. As far as the property's purchased, I believe it is fully purchased. I'm not... I can't be... I'm not 100% sure. I never really asked that specific questions, that question. But I can find out for you by the next meeting whether or not that is purchased. As far as the vermin control on that building, I mean, we're gonna renovate the building. I've been in that building. I've been inside that building several times. A builder who has bought the building or has owned the building has been in that building. And we disagree that the building is falling down. It's not. We thought it was pretty good shape. Now, if you've got some varmints running around the underside of it, well, then that's where we hire an exterminator to take care of that problem. And then we would move forward from there. As far as making it single-family homes, if it was a viable, financial viable situation, that's what we would have done. Christopher Homes, that's what he does. He builds single-family homes. But in this case, he did a pro forma, looking at what the value is, and it was financially unfeasible. Can I finish, please? And then what we... And then also, the part of the master plan is looking for more of a combined development along Jefferson. And this is what we provided. We have met that request. I think that the other questions that they have, I don't think I can answer because, you know, they're basically saying, "We think you're gonna change this." That is the whole reason why we're going conditional, so that we can't change this. So we can't do a bait and switch. We will be locked into doing single-family condominiums. We will be locked into doing home ownership. We will be locked into the aesthetics of the buildings. We will be locked into doing two-story buildings, not three-story. That was the whole point of the conditional. That was to elevate... To get this development and to appease some of your concerns and make sure that we are financially, we are legally locked in to what we say we're gonna build. And that's why we went with conditional.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. We're just taking a look at our... What we've all written down as well.
Can we see the real picture with the green stuff on it?
Yeah, as soon as you bow.
Oh, you have it?
No, we haven't got that for you.
I thought you said the next slide was...
No.
No, we're still in the preliminary stage. Did you want public hearings?
Just one question. Show us an idea of where green would be put.
Sure, I would gladly.
You know, give us an idea where this playground is. What is this all about?
Okay, this is all greenery. This is 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 a pond with holes around it. This is all greenery. This is greenery. And this is greenery in the front. We have a nice landscape built. And then this is all greenery.
Okay, where did you say you were trying to...
Okay, you know what? You've gotta come up to the... If this is public hearing still, you need to come up to the podium and ask your questions. But I will tell you, there's not gonna be some back and forth because that's not how... We need to write these questions down and address them all at once. So please, ask all...
Sorry. Sandra Mansfield, 27565 Ponchartrain. I could see directly, I've been at my home for 26, 27 years. My question is for the builder, if you can give back to him. Architect. If he lived there with his family for 26, 27 years, would his family would like to see the same thing that we're trying to not to have? Would he... His family like to see all these buildings and the people? Or would they would like still to see the single-family homes like everybody else does? That's my question.
And just, I noticed now the three of you, this is your second time of generally public hearing, it's one and done. Okay, so if it's something that's already been mentioned...
I just wanted to comment because he addressed traffic speed and police officers, and with the traffic, we're talking about volume. And I also kinda wanna know, is there anybody here that is for this? Raise your hands. Nobody?
So you addressed the board, not the public.
Yeah, this is your turn to give us the questions, to give the applicant questions. It's not a pep rally.
I apologize. So he stated that they are two and three bedroom dwellings, which is targeted towards family dwellings with kids. And as stated, we... Nowhere in this area... I have a child of my own, my neighbor has two small children. There's nowhere for kids to play. There is no sidewalks.
Yep, they've already got that written down.
No, I understand. But where is their plan for this area? Where are these children going to play? Because these are family dwellings.
That the HOA... It's the HOA's responsibility to establish that if this goes that far. Okay, Mr. Bergdahl.
Uh, let's do this real quick. Now, when this downtown development thing started, and everybody was saying, "Well, it's end of the line, it's Harrison Township, we got water on one side, we don't have the volume, we don't have the people." And then we were proposed that, "We're gonna do something really cool with this downtown development thing, you know, have like a cornhole and horseshoes and like a little coffee shop, outside cafe coffee shop, something cool." I got duped into this thing. I got duped, and I can say I was wrong because I believed it. And this is what we're getting. Multifamily, that's not downtown development, where you got a park, walkable park, la di da, walk with the baby buggies and play on the swings and bocce ball, okay? And fancy coffee, outside cafes? No, this is multifamily in a residential area. I got duped. I was... I'm wrong again.
Thank you, Mr. Bergdahl.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep it under three minutes.
Nah, you're gonna be under three minutes.
Jim Sandstock, 31698 San Juan. I was mentioned by the planner here that one of the concerns or one of the things you're supposed to consider as part of your rezoning considerations is that there was... That it cannot be developed profitably. This area can't be developed profitably, and he's gotta be able to show that. So has that been shown to anybody? No, it hasn't. He just claimed, "Oh, we can't make no money. We did a pro forma on this, and we can't make no money." BS, BS. Put some high-quality homes in there to match the ones in the area, and you can easily make the same money you're gonna make here. This is easy for the kind of builder they're using. This is easy, this kind of stuff. He wants to put 14 three-bedroom condos there. 14 three-bedrooms. Who lives in a three-bedroom condo if they're only a single... Retired couple or whatever? So how many cars are gonna be at each one of those 14 three-bedroom condos? How many? And guess what? They only got one-car garage, almost every one of them. There's only about a total of six garages there. Where are the rest of those cars gonna park? Who wants to be looking across the street and seeing 14 cars lined up across Jefferson? Or 14 cars lined up across Lance Cruz? The problem is, this guy's here for one thing, and that's it, money. That's why he's here. And it's up to you guys to protect the citizens of this area and this township from this kind of exploitation. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Graham.
Will you please come up again?
Yes, please.
So drainage was mentioned. Currently today, there are issues with drainage on the property and draining towards Ponchartrain and Lance Cruz. You're indicating that there's a pond in the center location. Is that to act as your retention?
Yes, that's... Yes. In fact, we called it retention pond.
So owner lived rather than rental. I believe that would become part of the HOA and the bylaws, correct, Mr. Young? Or perhaps...
It could be a condition that they offer as part of the conditional rezoning. It would... Could also be something that's included at the next stage, which would be review of the condominium plan and site plan. We would review the bylaws, the master deed. That could certainly be addressed there as well.
Thank you.
I would definitely wanna see owner-occupied only.
Well, one of the things that... One of the things that we'd be looking at maybe is a 20% or 30% rental only allowed at during... During intermittent... Doing for a limited... For a limited... Somebody couldn't sell their house, couldn't sell their condo, then they get to rent out for a few months, something like that. But there would definitely be a limited...
I'm just telling you that in my head, I want owner-occupied owner.
You know what? I mean, I can pass this on to the owner.
Sure.
He was out of town right now.
That's what tonight's... That's just my thought, it may not be the other commissioner's.
What's that?
That's my thought, I don't know if it's the other commissioners', but... That would be my thought as a condition.
Ann, I had a quick question with that. So if it is conditional on the site plan, it is locked to the site plan, whereas, correct or wrong, if it's in their bylaws or their homeowners association, those can always be altered by the residents of the homeowners association. Correct. If you want to ensure it, that it runs with the land in perpetuity, and if they were to change it, it would have to come back before here through this entire process, then that would be a good thing to have as one of the conditions. But that's up to them to offer.
I'm willing to...
A hardcore...
Thank you.
Hardcore definition.
I'd like to remind the commission that it's not... The planning commission and the township does not tell the, you know, directly. You have express views and what you'd like to see, but you can't say, "These are the conditions we want." It's up to the applicant to...
Understood.
Okay, commissioners? We've discussed the green space, the investment rentals, the drain issues, the vermin, the infestation, the price dependent, remaining stable in price.
We don't... We're shooting for around... If ever we need to sell them for around $300,000 for it to be a profitable situation.
So no traffic study has been performed? No traffic upgrades have been...
No, we didn't get to that point yet. I think that's expensive to do, and if we weren't going to have any chance of getting rezoning, then it would be no point spending $30,000, $40,000.
Has it been a market study?
No, it hasn't been a market study, but we have... But I know the owner's been talking to realtors. So I don't know if it's a formal study, but what he's definitely been... You know, he wouldn't have started this without talking to realtors. And you have to understand, too, that this is what he does for a living. He builds houses. He builds projects.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just looking over the public numbers. So just to clarify again, the number of units on site?
33.
I think it's actually... We lost one unit, so I think it's down to 32 now. Yes, 32 units. We decided not to try and fit three units in the preschool, but just stick to two units.
Uh, somebody asked about the auxiliary structures on site behind the current hall.
It'll be done. We have no need for it. I think they were part of the place, the play part, and maybe a shed for stories.
Sidewalks along... Sidewalks are planned along Jefferson?
We... I don't think there are any... We have... We do have our own sidewalk, and we can extend that out. Can I walk forward and...
North and south.
Yeah, for some reason, when it printed, it didn't print very well. We have a sidewalk from here to... We, we have a sidewalk from here to here, so if you wanted us to extend it to here, and to here, it would not have an issue at all.
There was a question about construction methods, about the metal roof.
Oh, that, the, the metal roof was only over the front door. The, all the roofs are gonna be asphalt, architectural asphalt shingles, high end, and what we did was, we had a sloped roof over the front doorway as to make it look like a copper, a copper roof or something like that, just as an accent. But, yeah, we weren't, there's no metal roofs on this building other than the accent ones over the front doors. And not all of them are gonna be that way. If you look at the colored rendering, some are actually asphalt going with peaks on them, and some are flat. And we wanted to do a wide range to make it look like individual homes. That's why all the facades, all the facades of each unit is different from the one right next to it.
So is this one that we received in our package, the same as what you were passing out tonight? If not, I'd like to see the one you were passing out.
Yeah, I think, does anybody else have any one that we're allowed? Can we volunteer for a second? Yeah, they have the same. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, when I talked about the metal roof, this is what I was arguing about.
Yeah, I understand, I just wonder.
No, no, this isn't that. That's accident.
We'd like to see, I think you'd like to see this as well.
Absolutely. Anything that you're passing out.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the, this is the, this is the school. See, the school has, yeah, a little bit of a rise on this side.
Excuse me?
This was not, this was the?
The reason why it wasn't in your package is because we've changed, we're changing it now to two, that's showing three, but we're actually changing it to two. We're making it bigger.
This is showing three.
But it should be changed, but.
Okay, so you'll be amending this.
Yes, yeah. That, the, the changeover from three, from three to two was because of the meeting with the building department and their requirements for, for separation between the units. We simply couldn't do it with having the three units because it was too, it was too awkward. So we went back to, to the center, just building right down the center, one half and one half. And that's the reason why we switched it back.
But I understand this is also conceptual, it's not the actual site plan, but there's a question about lighting on site. Is there plans to have parking lot lighting or just the lighting of the homes?
No. Somebody was asking where will the cars park? Well, there's, there are one car garages, but there's also a parking space behind the garage, in front of the garage. So two of the cars of every unit will be parked right next to, right either in the building or the adjacent to the building. And then we plan, we plan on just having lights basically, lights basically on the buildings with zero flash down. The parking really is for, for visitors because each, each unit will have its, will have two cars. So the parking on the site is a requirement by this, by this township for visitor parking. They require half a space of the visitor parking for each unit, which is fine, I mean, that, that, that would be necessary if somebody was having some friends over.
And these would be market rate?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And the finishes would reflect the market rate, both exterior and interior.
Are these on basements?
No, no basements.
Excuse me? What was the question?
These are on basements.
Okay, thank you.
But the units also have a storage room, as well as the garage.
So you moved far enough in your process yet to meet with the roads depart, county roads department or county public works?
Uh, no, not yet, not yet. We didn't want to get too far ahead if, if we're gonna, you know, if we weren't gonna get rezoned, it was, you know, that's a lot of time and effort for nothing and money.
There was one, there was one question, a resident asked if the access points at the end of Rivera and Ponchatrain would be accessible by the people in this potential community.
I'm not understanding the question.
I, I'm not sure what's at the end of Rivera or.
The lake.
The lake.
Oh, the lake access. That would be up to the HOA if they were gonna participate.
As residents only.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever deal was worked out on the HOA.
May I answer that?
I'll answer that.
May I answer that?
Sure.
Ponchatrain and Rivera have pieces at the end of the street, and it's only from Jefferson, they only have access from Jefferson to the lake. The other side of Ponchatrain does not have that access.
So it's the, it's the residents on the lakeside only, and it's residents only?
Yes, well then the answer would be no.
So the answer would be no.
Yeah. Oh, believe me, I'm sure those residents would stop.
Any other questions?
Sure, if I could, somebody talked about the, the road, I believe, on Ponchatrain, and I guess would the, would you be willing to participate in the SAD if, if they were able?
I'm unfamiliar with that, but if I was a resident living on Ponchatrain and, and there's an opportunity to improve a road that needed to be improved, I'm sure the residents would.
Right, so I'm asking you as the developer, if they had an opportunity to get an SAD together, would you be willing to participate in it?
I'm not sure what that means. Do you, you're talking about, you want us, you want the developer to pay for the repay?
No, participate in special assessment, assessment district to pave the entire street. Everybody would participate equally. I guess I'm just asking as a developer, would you, you know, because you can say, yeah, we will, but once you leave, it's up to the residents. So I guess I, I'm just.
I guess that's a question that would have to be answered by Chris Holzbeck and maybe a, some kind of warranty in this, in the form of a bond presented.
Okay.
But that's something that you have to take up with him. I have no authority to discuss that. I, I can't spend his money yet.
Thank you.
Speaking of money, what about the, the financial? I asked about the financial, you haven't asked.
Well, okay, let us get to that list then.
So we, we did ask, about, we asked if, if he had done the studies and he didn't involve the realtors.
Yeah, he said he hasn't.
I don't think he's done a formal study, I, I just said that he built single family homes and didn't do it here. So based upon that, it's because it wasn't financially viable. I mean, I'm just doing, doing a logical assessment of what I think happened.
Okay, another question, sir? Well, I mean, I think that we would be interested in seeing the screening, you know, and the green space enhancement. I think that would enhance the site, and that would be, if, if I were the one putting for conditions, I think that would be one I would be looking at.
When you say a green space enhancement, are you looking for a landscape plan?
Well, I think that the landscape should help to screen the areas of higher intensity. I think the landscape should try, should attempt to beautify the areas that, you know, might be more intense or.
It's like, okay, I understand, you're talking about screening walls where, where needed and, and providing.
Vegetation, I mean, just things that would help to make that transition to the single family more of a buffer.
Less impactful.
Less impactful.
Right, okay, I understand. Maybe, you're talking about a, some kind of vegetation screening between, may I come forward?
I mean, I don't wanna design this for you.
No, no, but I, well, we would have done that anyway. To be honest, we would have done that anyway. We would have provided some kind of screening, vegetation screening across here, across here. I mean, that's what we always do. And then, this is a apartment building, so still probably with some kind of screening through here. I mean, landscape, you have to put landscape, you know, most people won't buy the properties.
That's a good point. If you're gonna ask.
But if it doesn't look pretty, nobody buys. So it's gotta look pretty.
Anything else, commissioners?
Yes, I guess, this was presented originally as a site plan approval. The applicant showed up saying they were looking at a conditional site plan approval.
Res zoning.
Res zoning, I'm sorry, res zoning. And this is all conceptual. I guess what, what are you looking forward to tonight?
I guess we're looking forward this to be a informational setting to inform the neighbors and you as to what, what our plans are. You, you mentioned it was conceptual, but actually, we're, we're getting pretty hard line on, on, on the, on the buildings and the location and the sizes and the numbers. So to me, a conceptual could be, that can float in space as many times as you want, but this wasn't designed to float in space, this is designed to be, because we did conceptuals, probably a dozen designs, conceptual designs, and this is what we came up with after looking, after talking with the city and the city, realtors and everybody else, we've had numerous conversations with them. And this is, this is not necessarily a conceptual, but it's, it'll, this will be the baseline for our, our architectural site plan for site plan approval.
Conceptual may not be the right word, but you're talking conditional, and there's been no conditions presented in writing.
We weren't aware that you'd have to, that's what, we, we, the, the conditional thing was added on after we had a meeting with the planning department, it was an add-on, and we weren't really, we weren't really aware that we had to have a formal document, but that will be worked on by our lawyers post haste.
And was there any discussion regarding the exterior to be more in tune with the neighboring homes?
Yeah, well, that's why we chose brick. We chose brick, we didn't do this as a glass, you know, international style glass buildings. We chose materials that are very common in the area, brick and siding and asphalt shingles and garage doors, panel garage doors and windows that weren't exotic, but just standard double hung windows. We, we stayed within the, what we felt was the neighborhood vibe, and that was our, was our driving force to, to fit in. It wasn't to be a shocking, hey, look at us, we're bright red, you know, steel siding or steel paneling. We wanted to fit in with the neighborhood, and that's why we did this. And that's why, also why we chose to use townhouses and then break up the townhouse facade so that every townhouse, every individual townhouse has a unique facade compared to the next one. So it looks like, it looks like row houses rather than just townhouses.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Not a question, but I was looking, so the surrounding properties are R1A, R1C, R1D, I believe, B1, yeah, B1A. So the minimum requirements for R1A with four point four acres, you could get sixteen units on there. R1C is twenty, and R1D is about twenty-three for reference, when he's, when he's looking at thirty-two. I know we had issues in previous cases looking at density in comparison, so I just wanted, just wanted to make a comment on, on that.
And again, speaking of density, and I, you know, I guess if, if I were King and my, my, I guess my recommendation would be to see if you could work on density. Although I know you follow within there.
Yeah, we're actually lower density.
I get it, I'm making a suggestion. If I can get less density, I, I always go for less density.
Sure, I'll mention that to Chris.
Madam Chair, I have a few comments.
Yes, Mr. Richard.
I, I want to start with the planner's letter, page three, under the conversation of master plan. It's gonna be the third paragraph, last sentence. And it says, "The subject site serves as a transition from the planned for commercial mixed-use classification along Jefferson Avenue to the south and the planned single-family classification to the east and north of the subject property." Now, I, I bring that up because with our understanding that a conditional rezoning, a lot of things can become part of those conditions, the plan, the density, the form of the development and the buildings, the architecture of the buildings, even building materials, I believe, can be part of a condition within that response. When I, when I read the sentence, and I, I bring it out because I do agree with the sentence, that this is the opportunity to be a transition from that commercial node into the subject areas as noted here. And, and do you, do you actually have a copy of this? You can project. All right. So what I'm looking at here, which is what I believe to be the document that was handed out to the, to group from, I just heard from, from the applicant, I, as of today, I am struggling with, with the plan, the density, the forms of these buildings, the architecture and the materials, all, all the above, I'm struggling with. I don't, I have not yet found in my own mind how that has adequately transitioned from the village node to the subject surrounding properties, which are single family. To Larry's point on density, because it's one that I did reference in this here, that yes, the words are that you're, you're matching, you're just below the allowable density, but if we accept the, the premise that this is a transitional zone, then to me, just coming within the density requirements is not a transition to me.
But, now, I ask.
This is my opinion, this is, this is for, this is just for people to talk about observations, so you don't really need to debate it, this is just my observation as of today, based upon the plan put in front of me, this is what I am, this is what I see. So you can, these are my thoughts, you can do as you're doing with everybody else's thoughts, you can take them and come back with revised plan, and we can see what that looks like.
If I might add, to me, transition means that if you're going from commercial at one end and single family at the other end, transitional has always been multifamily.
No.
I mean, I'm.
So perhaps, but.
No, I'm just saying, that's.
I hear your point, but I don't find that solution as a transition personally speaking.
The facade of that one building is unbroken, you know, so maybe more nautical, well, and just, maybe just not such a long road.
So enough said, that's the purpose of today's public hearing, to allow the public to provide their thoughts and observations as well as the commissioners. And you've heard a bunch of commissioners provide some thoughts, and as I said, as of today, I've not been persuaded that this has been provided any adequate transition, in my opinion.
What would be an adequate transition in your mind? Just single family homes?
No, I, I would allow you to come up with that solution.
Okay.
I'm not being paid to be, I'm the architect here, I'm just being paid to look at what I'm looking at, and this is telling me that.
You're giving, you're throwing a word at me, but you're not giving me a definition of the word, so I'm having a hard time comprehending how to answer that.
Well, you've been provided with some green space askings, some screening askings, density addressing, and a, a, a clear, a clearer transition.
I believe Ms. Dublin mentioned the, the facade structure is not consistent with, with what Harrison Township expects. We are moving in the, in the nautical direction for a lot of our planned projects. We are moving in the, in the nautical direction for a lot of our planned projects.
Well, I think what I was saying is that this design of this long continuous facade, it gives the impression that it's more dense than maybe it even is. So if they, it were broken up like some of these others where it's, you know, perhaps four units to a building, I mean, again, I don't want to design this for you, but I'm just suggesting that this, just this one building that is on Land Cruze. Very, it's just very unbroken, I guess.
Here's our issue with that.
It's a more urban feel.
Our biggest problem with laying these units out was the fact that there's a requirement for a 20-foot green belt around each building, so that if you have, let's say you have two or three, actually, our first plan was showing four, no more than four units to a building. But then when we added the 40-foot setback between the buildings, we got hardly any units there. I mean, what the problem is, is the 40-foot setback, which I've never heard of in any township, and I've been doing this for many decades. I don't know why you would need 40 feet between buildings. If you took it down to what normally it is, maybe 20 feet, we could, we could actually put in four unit buildings.
Well, if breaking it up isn't possible, then maybe reducing it would help to, you know, shrink that facade.
Or we can get, or is there any possibility of getting a variance on the 40-foot setback between buildings?
So also, I was just looking at this, so this representation right here is the largest building on the site, Building A, which is eight units. And from there, and that's the closest one to the current apartments, from there, three ranch condos, there's six in the next building, five, five and six. So this is obviously the biggest building on site. But I agree with your comment about.
Well, we were locked, we were locked into that number because of the, if you can bring that back, I can show you why. For us to meet this setback requirement and this 40-foot setback requirement, and then to take 40 feet out of this, we're down to maybe one or two units here, one or two units here. The 40 units took out four, would take out four, to break it up, we'd take, we'd lose four units and write off that one, that one building, we'd lose half our units.
Maybe that would be a bad idea. Any other questions?
Suggesting conditions.
No, I understand, yeah, but I'm just saying, if there's a chance for us to get a variance on the 40 foot, then we could, we could go with what you, we would prefer to go with your plan.
Well, it's not my plan, I'm just offering you a suggestion.
Sure, I understand, I don't take it into consideration.
This particular building has a little more of a urban feel and less of a suburban feel.
Sure. Maybe we can put a ranch in the center. Take one of the units.
Well, I guess you can see how that looks.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, what do we want to do? Any other questions from the applicant?
Nope, we're all set.
Madam Chair, at this point, maybe I'd be in favor of leaving the public hearing open, waiting for the applicant to come back and provide us changes or conditions and any other modifications that we heard tonight.
Updated set plan.
Yep. And I'd be in favor of that.
I agree.
Is that the motion?
Well, I can make that a motion if everybody seems to be in favor.
I'll support.
Okay. So that is a formal motion I made.
Sabrina, did you get that? Okay, so we have a motion to request the applicant to return with new site plans, taking into consideration all that you've heard tonight.
Sure.
Keeping the public hearing open. I think that was basically.
The conditions in writing.
I'm sorry?
Present conditions in writing.
Oh, yes, yes, and present conditions in writing. Thank you.
And shown accurately on the site.
And say that again, please?
Shown accurately on the site.
The condition.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Maybe just to that, the comment about the site plan, revisions to whatever we're calling this are appropriate. I just want to clarify.
Don't call it a site plan.
Since it's a condition of rezoning and they're offering conditions, they may not want to offer the condition that we're gonna tie it to a particular site plan. They may want to tie it to a generalized concept plan like this, so we'll let them decide what they want to show. Clearly, you're asking for some, something else to consider. Let's not call it a site plan at this stage, let them decide what they want to show.
Point taken. I just want the data that we're given to be accurate.
So shown accurately, period.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to keep the public hearing open, request the applicant to return with additional information, shown accurately, conditions in writing. And we have a second by Ms. Dublin. Is that correct? Discussion on the motion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mulder.
Member Tom Allen?
Yes.
Member Dublin?
Yes.
Member Vacha?
Yes.
Member Blum, excuse, or Parker, sorry, Member O'Parker, excuse, Member Mulder, yes. Chair Murray?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you on a return. Thank you. No one finished business? We do have an item listed under new business, discussion of possible, I'll just go ahead. Discussion of possible special land use at property 17-12-15-330-004. Shipshandler. So we don't have any other information on that.
I know I'm fairly new to the application, but is this something you would usually do, like speculate on whether or not it's gonna go into the application?
No, we don't speculate. It either comes before or. I don't know, is there an applicant here?
Maybe Adam can talk about that question.
I don't know if there's an applicant.
Well, there isn't an applicant here.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, can you please take your discussion into the, into the guest review, please? So we can carry on with our business? Thank you. That's a problem, right?
So about at least one year ago, July of 2021, we had a potential applicant come before the tech team. This is to discuss a potential special land use request for Huron Point Excavating. This is a, I wish I could rotate this.
Top?
Top, right?
To the right?
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, this is South River Road. This is a property that has been, I think, a marina in the past, and there's, this applicant is looking to establish a contractor, kind of marine, marine contracting, marine construction type business at this property. You know, I think this started maybe with an enforcement of maybe the thought that there maybe some activities are going on this property without getting proper permits, so we talked to them in July. The tech team, of course, said this is a special land use request, it's owned waterfront district, marine contracting is a special land use. In order for them to establish a new marine contracting business where none currently exists, they need to come before the planning commission as a special land use request. Of course, along with a special land use request is the requirement that a site plan must also be provided, it must provide all the details of the ordinance, it must be prepared by a professional engineer or licensed professional surveyor architect, whatever it might be. So we've got this, that we've told, the directive to the applicant is to submit your plans. It's been a year, the request kind of came from the building department because the building department is in the middle of maybe enforcement activities, wants to get this right, wants to get this approved, if it's, wants to see if the planning commission would even approve it. So it's kind of holding up the process and the, and the holdup, according to the property owner, is that it's an, it's an existing site, we're not really doing anything, we're not digging, we're not building, we're da-da-da-da, so we would like to, you know, not hire or pay a licensed engineer or architect. And of course, we're telling them, you have to do it, only the planning commission can waive that requirement. And the only way to waive that requirement is to prepare your plans, and if you decide that you don't want to hire an engineer, you can do so, we'll accept that plan if, assuming maybe that's the only thing that's missing, and we could bring it to the planning commission's attention and you can make that decision at a planning commission meeting. I know, Larry, you were kind of engaged in those discussions and the thought was, well, maybe we could bring it up as an agenda item in front of the planning commission to even gauge your willingness to, you know, allow for a plan that isn't sealed to come before you for a use like this. My recommendation is that you wouldn't, but we wanted to just bring it to your attention. It's kind, I think, I think the building department honestly would just like an answer to be able to say, no, comply, submit and get out of it, so that he can move on with his enforcement. So I don't even know if the planning commission has the authority to make any formal decision.
I think you can get their discussion about it, but it would ultimately be if the applicant came and submitted and said yes or no, and then you'd be like, no, yes. You'd make the decision at the meeting, but you could get a flavor of what you were thinking.
Yeah, and maybe that's, that, we could share that with Brent, and he can share it with the applicant, so he knows.
So this applicant's actually been operating this business in violation for almost two years.
I would, yeah.
So, so I guess right there, I guess, that's, you know, that's tough for me. Just, you know, I guess if, again, my thought is, you know, we have requirements and I'd want to see those requirements met. That's just my call.
I, I agree. The rules are the rules, that's how we operate. We have our, we have our ordinance, we have our master plan. Everyone has to come, they follow the same rules, there are no, this is not something that I think we should or could give a break to. I, I think that if we were to do something like that, it would be floodgates open and that is not something, that is not something, that's not a position we want to be in.
Here, here's the site on Huron.
It's not a precedent that we want to set.
Right.
I would agree.
Wasn't, you may not know, but didn't they also petition the DNR or DEQ on something in the waterway? Were you aware of that?
It's been so long, maybe we talked about it, I do not recall.
Okay.
So the other thing is, the property is on both sides of the street, correct?
Yes, and so, you know, one of the things that we had expressed to this gentleman is that you're gonna have to provide parking for your employees. And they said, well, we own this property across, there's plenty of parking there. And we said, well, maybe we could do that, but we'd have to look at it, there have to be easements, there have to be, you know, like restrictions on that property that, that, we'd have to know what parking is required for that property and so, again, a plan.
But you're saying that the property on the north end is not, is not owned by the operators or on the south side?
I believe that they own both, I think that was the discussion, or maybe they have, or maybe they would want to establish some sort of a formal relationship where they would actually use some of their parking spaces. It's a possibility per the ordinance, but you have to formalize that.
And this is exactly why.
That's, I'm not really in favor of that.
We need to see that guaranteed.
We need to see that. Yeah.
That, that to me is just putting, putting a formula in place that down the road can really bite us.
So I think, I think we have an answer for Brent, unless there are any other comments from the planning commission?
Not regarding this item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Correspondence, comments from the planner?
We did have a tech team meeting yesterday. We had a number of items. The first one was the Eagles at 25455 South River Road. They have a large kind of outdoor concrete patio area that they wanted to put a permanent kind of gazebo type structure there, four posts and a roof kind of a thing. We, a project like that kind of brought up some other issues like turning their onsite septic to connect to the public sewer, compliance with the 50-foot setback requirement for structures from the water, they're, it would be about 45 feet, so kind of brought up some issues, we're not sure they're gonna, gave them some food for thought, no decision was made. It would have to come before the planning commission, because it's 2,100 square feet is that, that, it's over the threshold, so that would come before you. So we didn't have a, you know, it was just discussion. And the second one was Gino Surf, applicant was Huron Point Excavating, this is 37400 Jefferson Avenue, looking to put up a new seawall and mooring docks, not as a marina, but as like transient parking for boats for their proposed restaurant banquet center. We, we did not make a decision, we, the tech team all agreed that that would be something that had to come before the planning commission. There's also the zoning issue that we need to work out, so I need to talk to Rosemire about that. So no decision was made on that one. If anything moves forward, you will be seeing a plan for that as well. Bell Isle Awning 32091, South River Road, it's the North Star Sail Club. On the rear portion of their property, they have about a five-foot sidewalk that is adjacent to the rear of their building, they wanted to do a little outdoor seating area and just extend the awning to cover that little seating area and meet setbacks, that one was approved. The last one is LaBelle Companies 32190 North River Road. There, it's an existing marina site, there is a existing pool house and pool, there is an existing accessory building up front by the road. The road commission is apparently asking them to tear it down and move it somewhere else because they're gonna do some road project or improvements, and so they're proposing to relocate it further south on the site. We said that's okay in theory, but we want to see some green space there instead of where, you know, where that garage currently was. We, we had a number of things that we wanted to ask, we wanted to see on a revised site plan, and they would need a ZBA variance for the building location. It's a very narrow site, very narrow, you really couldn't put any building there that complies with the setback, so they needed variance as well, so that one was.
Seems like a hardship.
It seems like a hardship. So we did approve, but we wanted to see some, the green space contention on the ZBA. That was the fourth case.
That was it?
That's it.
Okay.
And we have a workshop on the sixth, is that correct?
That's correct.
Comments from the floor?
Workshop on the sixth.
Yes, we, we have a workshop planned for October 6th, 6:30, start time?
No, no. We're just talking, waiting for you.
I'm getting old.
I didn't even see you back there. Okay, three minutes, Mr. Sensen.
Oh, I'm not gonna take three minutes, I got a couple of questions. As you know, I've been here the last couple, two or three planning commission meetings, I'm sure thrilled to hell, I like a lot of you guys, but I get a lot of phone calls due to my past experience in the township and stuff. And I got a question from several people, and I actually had to admit, I didn't really know, so I'm coming to ask you guys. A lot of the residents, especially as we're getting into these rezoning issue things, one of the requests and people are asking, how do we get the property rezoned over there on Ballard Street? There's two different pieces of property that were rezoned, many people complained that it was done secretly, whatever. How does the township residents asked to get something rezoned, a neighborhood?
Buy it, could buy it. Yeah. Buy it and come forward, just like any other.
Is there a process to petition the township?
Uh, no, not a formal process. The only way to do it is if you're a property owner. No, not a formal process, the only way to do it is, if you're a property owner, you have the ability to petition the township for a rezoning. The other method of a potential rezoning change is for the township to initiate a change. And so in that sense, it's not a formal request, but any person like yourself can appear before the planning commission or the township board and suggest, hey, planning commission, hey, township board, you guys ought to look into this. That's the, and if you decide, if the township board hears it, and they say, hey, planning commission, look into this.
Without paperwork, without research? They leave that all up to us?
Sure. So you'd have to, you can't just rezone it, now, you would have to go through the process, and it'd be a township-initiated rezoning, a public hearing, you'd have to notify the property owners, so.
So we would act on behalf of the person bringing it forward as representing that information to the township, so that it becomes a township suggested.
Correct. So only the property owner or the township itself could initiate a rezoning change.
And that's not done very often by the township, typically as part of like a master plan or.
Yeah, most typically you would do that following up from a master plan.
Some justification, so you're not being sued for taking.
Yeah, when we created our village, you know, our V1A district, that followed the waterfront redevelopment plan. I don't think we've had a township-initiated zoning.
Well, maybe we did. We did at one time.
Corrected administrative error that we found that clearly was.
There was one over off of, on the other, on the north side of Metro Beach too, where the guy had a, had a zoned, it was a multi-story, it was like several stories tall, and he, the township initiated the rezoning.
Now that you remember.
Now I remember. The township board said, we are rezoning it, we don't want that high rise there, and we are rezoning it, and he fought them, and they, he took them into court, and he lost. So, okay, so basically, I would have, well, I or somebody else from that area would have to come and say, hey, we want to see this rezoned, would you guys put our request forward to the township board? Or should we go directly to the township board? Now, the good question, the good answer would be, yeah, go to the township board.
Could be a recommendation, right?
Yeah, okay, anyhow, that was my stuff.
Thank you. Comments from the commissioners? No, 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 if it's worth saying, please, bring it forward.
We were just discussing the topics of the workshop.
Okay, oh, okay, all right. Mr. Batya?
Yeah, I do have one. Just like to advise this board that, as we all know, for quite some time, I've served as the PC liaison to the ZBA. My current travel schedules has made that awfully complicated for me to be participating in PC and ZBA. So I am asking today just to be, to be removed from the liaison from ZBA, and that asking to be removed from PC just as, just as a ZBA liaison.
Oh, glad to hear you're choosing us.
So for everybody just to know what that means, a ZBA meets second Tuesday of every month. It's not been, to date, it's not been a big struggle, because I've had, I've missed a number of them because of travel. The ZBA does have an alternate strategy in place, so ZBA is always kind of positioned, if somebody's not there, there's always an alternate that steps in. So that's not been the case, it's just that the past trend, as well as the future trend, is still trending towards, my ability to participate is becoming more and more diminished, and I just don't think it's fair for the residents or other members of that board to not be participating, so I'd like to at least be, like I said. Remove from that. It's been a great opportunity.
Thank you, thank you for letting us know.
So just a comment of that, I believe the board of directors actually makes that decision. So we probably have to get a request from you, maybe you can send it to Sabrina, and we can make sure, I can make sure it gets to the board level. And then the board would actually have to make that change, so I guess if anyone else may be interested, we can include your name in the request to the board as well.
God, so my request though, just the individual?
Yeah.
Or else it's a step up.
Think about it, great.
You know, you can follow it through me and Sabrina, we'll run it up, okay?
Awesome, thanks.
All right, anything else, commissioners? Well, I just have one thing to say, and I wanted to get this out, and I know nobody's going to see it except us and the people that are here, but I'm going to say it anyway. So during the last meeting, we had, it was pretty contentious, there were a lot of residents here, and it got pretty passionate, and there was some anger, and a lot of words were said, and one of the comments was, we put you there, we can take you out. We elected you, we can unelect you. I just want to make it clear that we are not elected, we are appointed by our township board. And the reason we're appointed is because we raised our hand and requested to be a part of this township government. And we do that, we did that, because we care about our township, no more, no less than a lot of the residents, and certainly no less than the residents who were here last meeting, the passion. We choose to be a part of this township because we love it here, and this is the action that we take, this is how we choose to participate. We are not elected, we volunteered, and we were appointed based on that. So I just want to make that clear, and the residents have got to know, we are just doing our jobs. We're collecting information, we're using the documents that we have provided to us, the ordinance, the master plan, the site, the education from all of us, the expertise of our planners, our building officials, everyone involved. We're not just doing this because we think, well, this is the right thing to do. We don't make decisions that way, so we just want everybody to know, we're doing, we are doing our due diligence, we are doing our jobs. We are residents just like you, so I just wanted to say that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I'm trying to benefit everybody, not just one street.
Yes, we do, right, exactly, exactly. We do have a workshop October 6th, 6:30, and there's a handful of items that are going to be discussed. Boat storage, container storage. You're good. Waterfront, I'm sorry, waterfront fencing.
And outdoor dining.
And outdoor dining, so be there, please. Our next meeting is October 20th, 2022, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Support? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?